I first would like to say thank you for everyone who who kind of swerved to the whole remote. I appreciate that quite a bit, but I would like to call on the Board of Ed a regular meeting to order today is February 27th and it is 6:03 by my by my clock on my computer. And we need to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance and Liz, would you be willing to start us off? As I ask you to do it with your
cup in hand. So ready? I pledge allegiance
allegiance to the flag.
of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Kim. Thank you, Liz. I appreciate that. I do. I do. I do. I do. Superintendent Austin, I believe that we do not have any special visitors.
We do not.
Okay.
You're right.
All right, so I am going to move us on to the comments from citizens. And this is the portion of the agenda where the Board welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker presentation and cannot respond during the comments of citizens portion of the board meeting. Citizens should make their presentation from the podium and state their name and addresses for the record. And we will limit for five, the our conversation for five minutes. Dean, welcome. It's good to see you. Ms. Joan, was there anyone that signed up that you know of?
I had an email Friday, which I shared with you and Susan.
Yep, and I actually contacted the person this afternoon to let them know that we were not going to be in portion. We were not going to be in person, but that we were going to be remote to offer them that time.
Okay, that's the only one I know of.
Okay. All right, but I do see that Portia, you have, I would love to recognize you. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. First off, I'd just like to say my name is Portia Bordlon, 24 Jefferson Drive, Groton, Connecticut. Full disclosure, I'm a Groton town counselor, also a resident with children, one son left in the school. First, I just wanted to start off by thanking Dr. Ackerman for attending a Martin Luther King Junior Scholarship Trust Fund fundraiser that was held in celebration of Black History Month this Saturday at St. Mark's Episcopal Church. And it was nicely highlighted in the day paper. It was something I had helped put together and collaborated. And it was heavily attended and it was such a wonderful time and the donation link is still up if anyone is interested. Also, I just want to congratulate the school on their, you know, article in the paper today about the expanding careers and related courses. I, well, I had a question and a statement. The CNA program has been around for many years. It was something I had partaked. I was a part of myself in 98, from 95 to 98. I think it was around even before that. So I'm not sure if they're expanding it further. But that is something that has been around and has been utilized. So at that time, it was only one class. So my question was, is this expanding into multiple classes so that it can serve more students? Because it was a great opportunity. I was able to partake in. As far as the ROTC program, I know it's not the full blown original program that a lot of other schools have. This is also something I'm wicked passionate about. It was something I came before this board, maybe over almost five years ago, asking about this at the time when my son was in middle school, who is now graduated and in the Navy himself, serving on on the US Virginia on submarines. It's really important as a military community, looking at New London, who has an ROTC program. I know that you guys did get the grants. I just want to make sure that the program is going to be properly funded and uniforms and everything will be provided. And that it is going to kick off next year as it states it's going, it's supposed to. Last I heard, they were still waiting on the right, the writing of the curriculum. I'm just hoping that there will not be a delay and that this program will take off at the start of the next school year. As we know, looking at the whole, like, you know, athletes that have been dying from sudden cardiac arrest, heart attacks and cardiac arrest are different. And one of the things that after watching all of this, it wasn't just the athlete on the Bills team. It's been, you know, youth at gym classes and other things, a young girl who had undiagnosed lupus went into cardiac arrest out in California. And I was watching this documentary and it stated, you know, what can you do for your community? How are you and your community serving as far as AED machines? So I brought this up at the town council. And in fact, after my research, I found almost five places in the town, the library, the Human Service Building, and several other places that we did not have one. And that was a simple, mere ask is where do we stand? And as a result, John Burr, our town manager, did work very hard and, you know, did get those AD machines into place. So from a Board of Ed perspective, I am concerned from our building, looking at Fitch High School, after speaking to some of the security officers there when I'm there for marching band and fencing. In the new section of our building, the three floor side, there is no AED machines mounted on each of those floors. If there was to be an emergency on the third floor on the far corner, the closest AED mean that's AED machine that is mounted, that a anybody can grab that certified or non-certified to rush to get to an emergency is mounted out in front of the auditorium. So I'm just kind of hoping it's a very minor expense, but I'm just one love to see proper AED machines mounted on each of the floors because it can take five to nine minutes to travel from one side to the building. Even if you have a portable one, depending on where that person is. And if you have staff in the building or subs, they're not going to know what the portable one is. Most people know where the mounted ones are. For example, if I'm working in the building, I am certified, you know, for CPR, first aid, AD, I could grab that, you know, and use it immediately if I know where they are. So I just would like to see that. Also, making sure gym teachers are certified CPR. It's not a state requirement, but it's something that we can require here. It is something that we could pay to make sure that they're certified, $100 and a gym teacher can be certified. I know that if they are a gym teacher and they're also are teaching athletics, they may already be certified. But it's not a requirement, and I'd love to see Groton consider this from K through 12. Because at any point during gym is a spot where a child could experience cardiac arrest. If a child is out with a gym teacher on the track at Fitch, the AD machine is in the field house and not always the gym teacher has a key. I'm not sure if they're going to mount one outside, but the accessibility from staff I'm hearing is not always accessible out there. Again, hoping that all of our special ed teachers are certified in proper CPR and AED.
You have about 30 more seconds, a minute.
Thank you. So that's my big push is to make sure and looking for anywhere else that we're deficient in any of our other buildings. That was the outlier that I saw. And in fact, when I walked at parent teacher conferences and then being in the building, there were none mounted on those three floors. Lastly, again, I humbly come before you for the sixth time, speaking about Honors English 11, the need for Honors English 11. Again, we skip, we go from college prep for, you know, freshmen and sophomore, and then in junior year, we have, there's just no Honors English and some students are finding the need to have Honors English and not go into AP or IB programs. So if there's a way that we can bring that in. And if you have a kid that comes in and honors and just doesn't feel comfortable going higher than honors, we need that support there. I also was told that, oh, don't worry, there'll be the supports up in the ID and AP classes for this. And in fact, I hate to say this, and I'm not trying to be negative, from firsthand experience with my own child, the supports have not been there. The teachers are phenomenal. It doesn't discredit the ability of that teacher. She's done a wonderful job, but the supports have not been pushed in. Lastly, we're in a high need for certified math teachers as tutors. If a child does not feel comfortable utilizing Falcon Academy, because maybe they just don't want to disclose to their peers that they're struggling. That is not a proper form of intervention. And we need to make sure that children that identify with 504 IEPs, as the resource room teacher may not be at the max level of proficiency in the higher level maths. They might need push and support in that resource room, and we need to make sure we have the staff available. Thank you so much for your time. And again, I will send this all an email, but my big concern is AED machines. And I look forward to seeing you guys with the upcoming budget. And please make sure you increase funding for fencing and marching band, as well as all of the other sports that allow all students to play. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye. Thank you, Portia.
Thank you.
I think the next person that just reached out to me was Kim.
Fahy.
Fahy, right? And Kim, I am sorry that I can't spell absolutely correctly, but I think I did it better on the second time around. But Kim, if you could, if you could just state your name and your address, that would be great. Like the, like Portia, before you, you have five minutes to be able to talk. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Kimberly Fahy. I live at 46 Pendleton Farm Lane, here at Mystic. And sorry. So I wanted to come to you tonight. I am a special education para in Groton, and I have been for the past 16 years. I love my job. I love the students I work with. However, after listening to the board meetings over the past few months, I really felt compelled to come and speak with all of you. Just a little background on me. I've lived in Groton my entire life. I attended all of Groton schools. Ms. Ackerman was actually my language arts teacher 42 years ago at Cutler. My two children attended schools here. My youngest graduated from Fitch in 2021. So I have a strong connection and a loyalty to the Groton Public Schools. I'm sad to say I don't always feel like the loyalty flows back to me. And I understand that we're in a budget season and I understand and appreciate all of the many decisions that are being made. But I feel like it's past time for the paras in the district to be recognized for the hard work that we do. When I watch your meetings, I hear a lot about the hiring of experts, you know, highly trained people who are being hired. And I'm here to tell you that that we are experts as well. We are highly trained employees. Whether that be from years of experience working in the district or coming here with other experiences from someplace else. I have to be honest, it was frustrating to watch the meeting recently when the you were speaking about the tutors being hired and how beneficial they are to the district. The tutors are providing tasks that we as paras have provided for years. We often work in classrooms, one para to two students, and many times it's more than that. It's a para to three or four students. We take small groups of children. It could be a reading group, a math group, a writing support group. We gather our students with with peers and engage them in appropriate social interactions. The only difference between myself and a newly hired tutor is a bachelor's degree and about $15 more an hour. There are tutors currently working in Groton. They're reliant on the expertise of the special education para. Like I mentioned before, this is year 16 for me, working in Groton, and and my salary last year was $18,734. I actually make $1.11 more an hour than someone who starts brand new today. So I'll say that again, my salary after being here for 16 years is less than $19,000 a year. Working in some of the most challenging situations in classrooms in this district. I don't want to leave, but it's to the point where I don't know if I can afford to stay. I can drive up the road in any direction, 15 miles, 10 miles, any direction and be hired as a para for $3 to $4 more an hour to start. This year, we work harder than ever. We're shorthanded due directly to the fact that our pay is not competitive in relation to surrounding districts. We're losing paras weekly to neighboring towns. We're paying much more. High turnover, difficulties in recruitment. We're just overwhelmed and frustrated. Many of us doing the job, you know, of two people. We're doing everything we can to meet the needs of the of the changing classroom and the changing, you know, student. We provide support. It's written in their IEPs and those are legally bound documents. Yet we're the least paid out of anyone throughout the district. No other body of employees in Groton is paid as low as the special education para. Please start investing in us. You know, we have value and we matter to the students. We just, we just want to do what we do and make a livable wage that is not below poverty level. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you. And I am saddened that you felt, and it could have been even a comment that had come out of my mouth. I don't remember necessarily that I don't value the work that para professionals bring to the district. Your relationship both with the kids and with the teacher and the staff is invaluable. And I know I speak for the board when we recognize that. I'm uncomfortable about talking about salary in the present moment in that the board negotiating team will be working with your negotiating team because your contract is up. And so that will be in spring. So I I'm uncomfortable about addressing that just because we will be going into negotiation where we can do that. We, though, I think that, as you said, you were listening to our board meetings. We were, we've been talking about that a lot in terms of like, how do we make sure that we are competitive and also understand where the other districts are, how they are, how they are doing that as well, since they have the same budget constraints as we do. So, but we will be working on that in negotiations with you. Sorry about that. And but thank you very much for coming. I actually saw your your name quite a bit in the town in the meetings. And so I appreciate your dedication to the district by showing up to our meetings. You're a better woman than me. I will end. I don't know if Portia is still on, but Portia, I'd be more than happy to make sure that Susan will address these things that you brought up into our board notes, because I think that there are some things that I think our staff, or excuse me, our board would be interested in knowing, especially the the AD machines and our certification. But I'll make, we'll make sure that that kind of gets dressed and that will be in the I'm actually telling Susan how to write her notes. That's not my intention. But I'll make sure that 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 gets in that. Okay. Remember, this is just comments to to whoever is speaking, but Rita, I'm going to recognize Rita and then Liz.
Yes, I want to have report back from the administration at the high school about the AEDs on the new wing of the building, the three floors. And also, I have also requested many times that honors English be in 11th and 12th grade, not just 11th grade, but 12th grade. Because you go either from college or to AP and there's nothing in between. So that is something I'd like to have the administration come back to us on and report. And in terms of the I value the special education, all the paras tremendously and looking forward to the negotiations starting, starting this spring. So thank you for coming forward. We really appreciate it. It means so much to us to hear from concerned parents and citizens.
Thank you, Rita. Liz?
Thank you, Kim. I just wanted to, I want to ask a point of clarification from you, Kim. About when you say that we can respond to comments from the citizens, can I clarify something that I've heard? Is that appropriate?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
Andrea? You're still muted.
I'm so sorry. Thank you. I just wanted to tell Kim how much I appreciate her thoughts and her and her position. And also, I appreciate how much you used your public speaking skills. Good for you. And you validated your experience. Thank you.
Are there any comments from citizens? All right, hearing none, let us move on. Um, I think we have a couple of our student reps on. If you're have, if you're if your internet is strong enough, we would love to also see you as you speak. But I know I see Kate is there.
Isaiah, I think I saw.
I guess I was Isaiah, and I think Zoe signed on at one point. So if you guys would like to give a report, that would be great. How about this snow day?
When they speak, because we're on Zoom, could they identify themselves?
That'd be great. Thank you.
We're supposed to do that too. And I'm sorry I didn't before.
Hi, everyone. I'm Isaiah Anderson, a senior at Fitch High School, and I mostly have sports to talk about today. So it's towards the end of the winter sports season and for swim, they have ECC Saturday. Fencing, they also have states on Saturday. Then track finished with states, but our national team that I mentioned before, Charlie Tarbox, N'Meel Gamboa, Ryan Dunning, and Charles Cabuso have nationals soon. Basketball, we have our girls' basketball team won their first round of states today. And then boys' basketball has their first state game this week. And as for wrestling, Nazir Matthews, Matthews finished second place in states this week, which is pretty awesome. It's definitely tough to do. And one thing that I'm actually super excited for as well is we're starting this volleyball and basketball tournament on March 6, 7th and 8th of next week. Which should be fun. And my last thing for today is actually kind of commenting on something that Mrs. Bordlon and Mrs. Wolfman talked about, which is the need for higher levels of honors English. I've definitely noticed during my time at Fitch High School that the jump from honors English 10 to AP English is steep. And having honors English 11 and or 12 would definitely be beneficial for everyone at Fitch High School.
Thank you, Isaiah.
You're welcome.
I'll be looking forward to hearing. I think Susan, we have lots of agenda items. I think that that would be a
We sure do. I can't wait to have some COWs where we can go back to teaching and learning.
Yeah, I hear you. All right. Zoe or Kate? Oh, there you are, Kate.
Hi, I'm Kate Simaashi. I'm also a senior at Fitch High School. And I just have a few things about the music department that I really wanted to hit on. This is something I've been passionate about for a really long time. Starting in elementary school and here I am, my senior year, finishing it out with a big trip to Hawaii in just three weeks from now. So we've been doing an absolute ton of fundraising and it's been an absolute blast getting to work with people, not just in my own grade, but with people that I wouldn't normally get to see in any of my core classes. So our most recent fundraiser was Beatlemania, which was a concert that happened this past Friday. It was like this Beatle tribute band that came to Fitch and the choir, orchestra, and band all got to perform with them on stage. And it was an absolute blast. I know I had a ton of fun doing it and I'm pretty sure all of my classmates did as well. And then the other thing that I wanted to mention was that on March 15th, the Hawaii, the students going to Hawaii are having a concert at the Fitch Auditorium, I believe at 6:00 PM, but I will get back to you on that to show our like set per se for Hawaii, which I'm really excited about. We'll be performing at a festival, which is a competition, which is our first choir competition that we'll be doing since I've been in high school. And as well as performing at the Pearl Harbor Memorial. So those are both two really exciting things I wanted to share.
And you'll make sure that we'll get the dates?
Yeah, I can email those.
I would really appreciate. There are many Groton former people that used to live in Groton that now live in Honolulu. And I know are anxious to go and and to see you perform. So it'd be great to have the date and times. Thank you. Are we waiting for Zoe?
I know Zoe, are you gonna?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That's right.
So I'm Zoe Antipas. I'm a junior at Fitch. And I just have a few things about some of the other district schools that I I received information from their principals. So Groton Middle School is holding a PTO versus, I mean, a staff versus student basketball game at Fitch at 5:30 PM on March 9. So I've heard they're kind of, you know, getting ready for that. And then Northeast Academy is holding their fifth grade drama production of Souserkol, which is scheduled for Thursday, March 2nd and Friday, March 3rd, being at seven on both nights. And they're also bringing Celebrate the Arts back, which is scheduled for March 16th and 17th. And I went to NEA and Celebrate the Arts was one of my favorite things and I'm really glad they're bringing it back because I know, you know, a lot of kids missed out on it. It was a really good experience for me. Mystic River is having a spirit day on Monday. Actually, they had it today. And so they could wear their pajamas to school, just kind of like a little, little thing, a little thing for the students. And also tomorrow's a snow day, so a kind of good segue into that, I guess. And they're having a family bingo night. Oh, I guess I already had their family bingo night, sorry. On February 24th, I heard it went pretty well. And then Thames River had their two turtles from the aquarium and they, they've been taking care of them, feeding them, having classes kind of go through doing those doing those things. And they, they came up with two names. I heard that was kind of a struggle for a lot of kids because they all kind of wanted different things. But through staff and student votes, they narrowed down to River and Brook. So I heard that was kind of exciting. And a lot of the kids are very, very interested in the turtles, very happy about having them. So and that's all I have.
It's very fun. Thank you, Zoe. Any questions for our student reps? Or comments? Liz?
Just Zoe, could you do us a favor and send those dates, especially for NEA? And the other, like when they have performances, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, I can do that.
Actually, Zoe and Kate, if they can actually just go to Joan, so that Joan can then make sure that it gets to Susan and Joyce. So that it's not piecemeal, but yeah, great. That would be great.
One day I have a dream to have a whole district calendar, even if we have to have it, you know, click on so that you could see all those things happening at once. It's hard to get around to each of the school calendars. I'd just like to see it in one place. So
So Andrea?
I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the the student reports. They were succinct and they were to the point and very meaty. So I really appreciate that. And I also wanted to say that on, I believe it's March 19th, I just got an email from Isaiah. He's being honored at Mystic Congregational Church. And I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that. I'm not sure what time the the service is, but that will be on the 19th. And if I get the time of the service, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
And that's from Martin Luther King. That's what I
Kim?
Yes.
Jennifer Cobell would like to comment. You address that with her, please?
Yeah, I was going to do that right now. I don't know, Jen, if you
I just wanted to comment on the student. I just wanted to comment on the student thing. It's, that's all. So whenever you're ready.
So we are done with our public comment piece, Jen?
No, I just wanted to comment about the students and say that I attended the, the where Kate went through. And that's all. I wasn't commenting. I just wanted, if there were questions on that, I thought you could comment on that. Was saying I attended the Beatlemania they had, and that's all I wanted to talk about. That's all. Saying it was a really nice thing that they did. And it was really awesome. It's all I wanted to say.
Jennifer, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. And I appreciate that. I'm glad that you went to, I'm glad that you went to that. And thank you very much. All right. So there was a woman who wanted to speak about the waiver. And so we are past our public comment piece. And so Kristin, what you can do is that you are more than welcome to send your comments to me and I will make sure that I share them with Susan Austin. But at the present moment, we are now sort of in the board members piece to that. And I know that you're new and I appreciate that. But always feel free. It's the last it's the fourth meeting is our regular board meeting, and that is where we welcome citizens' comments to be part of our dialogue and to make us more enriched. So that is that. I'm not trying to be a stickler, but that is sort of the reason why we have the agenda the way it is. But so Susan, please feel free to start your superintendent administrative report.
And I'm always, I'm always happy to speak with parents. So just, I'm just a phone call or an email away. And I can make time. I've actually made some time in my schedule to be speaking with lots of teachers and you know, staff and parents who want to discuss the waiver. So happy to do that. So beyond the budget, I've been very So beyond the budget, I've been very busy with the um, reading waiver and with gathering information, doing a lot of reading, a lot of. Um, work myself on science of reading and work that we're doing in the district. Doing a deep dive on the science of reading with literacy expertise in that area. Um, so um, between that and I will be um. Writing testimony. I have been also creating testimony and I will be in Hartford um, on Wednesday. Being able to testify on behalf of really the new waiver. So I wanted to take you through a couple of slides. I've also got a couple of pictures because I think a picture is worth a thousand words when you can. You know, either walk through with me and see it happening in the classroom or see it. In board notes and see how our kids are learning to read and write. So um, if I can share the screen. Hmm. Hold on. Are you able to see this?
Yes.
From the beginning.
It's just not very big.
Okay, let me just, um. It's coming on my other screen. I'm, I apologize. So I will make it bigger on this screen. Can you see that? Alright. So this is really introducing the Connecticut waiver. Um, which is submitted by Groton Public Schools actually today. Um, and it really started out back in June 2021. Um, it was legislation passed. It was called the Right to Read Legislation. Um, and it really systematized um, a statewide reading response. So it caused the State Department of Education to put together a committee. To look at um, the science of reading specifically, which is phonemic awareness and phonics and. Includes oral reading and a lot of foundational skills that our early readers need. So really starting in preschool, pre-K. In um, our schools, we use different programs for phonemic awareness and many of you may remember. Reading to your own children, reading to nieces and nephews and having a lot of rhyming going on and songs. And that's really what enriches our very young learners and gets them ready for reading. So um. They really wanted to look at over, an overhaul situation. And um, making sure that um, there were requirements for districts. Providing professional development, hiring external literacy coaches. And coordinating with teacher preparation programs and all of those things are very useful. I mean, we've been. In, had embedded coaching from 2015 when we received our first DODIA grant in literacy. When we received number, I think five, which was a STEM careers and a. Literacy focused and literacy teaching, reading and writing across the disciplines, all the way through middle school and high school. So it's something that I'm a, a real believer in, that you really need that ongoing professional learning. And I, I'm a believer also in our teachers who are really highly qualified and skilled. And continue learning and growing, you know, it never ends. And same for the principal, same for the superintendent. Um. So. The Center for Literacy basically was a small cohort. I think there was one superintendent on it. Fran Rabbinowitz from CAPS. So she really gave us some inside information. About who was on the group. There are a few teachers. I think there was at least one literacy specialist. There was Margie Gillis, who is a CEO for Literacy How. Which is an organization down in lower Fairfield County that works with a lot of dyslexic families and does a lot of assessment. And we've actually used her services in helping us with several cases that we've had. Um. But there was very few representation from across the district from our teachers, administrators, superintendents.
So Susan. This is really hard to read and the board didn't actually get to the PowerPoint beforehand. And I think one of the things that we talked about was that you were just gonna update. The board about what was going, that we were gonna have this as a larger meeting because I think a lot of us have lots of questions.
Okay. So I just wanted you to have the background information for the original um. Right to read legislation. Um, I did want to show you that. Um, when you go into our classrooms, one of the things you see is children are reading and writing a lot. And there's a lot of direct instruction in reading and writing. And in those primary grades, you see a lot of small group, even some one-to-one. Um, and I can kind of show you a picture of that too, so you can see. You know, you might see the teacher sitting with one child or a small group. You'll see um, as in this picture, a lot of phonemic words work and um. Sounding out their, their letters and making sense of. Letters and words and sentences and that's how it kind of all begins. So I kind of wanted to showcase that. Um. There is a new bill that is um, really scheduled for public hearing, which I mentioned, and this bill is um. Really um. Setting the stage for giving some extended time on the waivers and um. Adoption of the programs. Um, it also. Um, you know, it's important that we speak up to our legislators and we've done that in. A lot of different roundtable discussions right here in southeastern Connecticut. But it's, it's good to hear voices from educators around the state. Um, and it's an opportunity for us to do what's right for our students. Um, I think that so many of the things that the state has in mind, um. Belief statements, I think we all can believe in. Um, we do believe in the science of reading. We do know, we do want all of our students reading at the end of grade one and being independent at grade three. And we want a strong literacy curriculum. And actually, the work of the state. In the past has been really fine job at writing model curriculum that. Then districts can use as templates or use as models for writing their own curriculum. So that's the work that we really want to encourage the state to do. They have not done that in K through three literacy yet. Um. And you know, we really believe one of the things that they're going to be unfolding is the, the master class. We've already asked if Groton can participate. In this training, it's been designed. Through the State Department and with the support of CAPS, which is the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents. So um, that's something we definitely want to participate in. Um, we have a lot of teachers who've done a book talk on the shifting the balance and done webinars. We have a lot of um. Elementary teachers who've gotten their certification in reading recently. So people are really curious. They want to know more and I think this is the time. To give that kind of instruction. We all believe in that high quality instruction. And the belief that our teachers, um, you know, are really crap, are really gifted at what they do. And the other thing is we don't believe that those commercial programs are a magic bullet. There's not one size that fits all. And you know, it's even been said that they de-professionalize teachers. It would remind you, it might take you back to um. You know, books that we called basals where instead of getting lots of literature and lots of, you know, books to read. They're kind of all samples of stories. Our stories that might have been written by an author you would know and stories that are written by authors you might not know. And a lot of word work and workbook work that goes along with it. So it's, it's, and it's, it's rolled out for an entire class. And we know that in a classroom of kindergartners, first graders, they're reading at all different levels. So it's really important that we meet their individual needs. Um. So another picture I just wanted to show, here's what it looks like. We can be very Groton proud. You have a lot of students really reading lots of books, reading with their teacher, li- you know, we're listening to them read. They're answering really. You know, thinking questions about characters and how characters change over time. And what the author's purpose in the story was. Um, and it goes all the way into middle school with Cornelius Minor. And a lot of PD. So you can see teachers involved in professional development. Some of these um. You know, staff developers coming in and modeling classroom instruction. So you know, I, I just wanted to say that the um. In the long term, you know, we need to um. Talk to our legislators and we need to work with our Connecticut um, State Department of Education. Um, around this and um. But ultimately, you know, you read the letter that was crafted by the commission, to the commissioner from CAPS and the Alliance superintendents. And um, it really is important that. Curriculum instruction and assessment is done by educators who are really in the know. Um, with some expertise in literacy and of course in the science of reading. But it is then approved by boards of ed and not mandated by the state. So I think that's important message that needs to come home. And I was just gonna um, leave with this a little bit and answer any questions you have, but. Beyond the student data that we've looked at being a lead in the um, alliance districts. Really showing significant student growth. Knowing that, and I sent an article that um. Miguel Cardona, who is our Secretary of Education, had written on data. We know that data has really, our kids have really struggled with COVID and it's necessary to do more accelerated learning, teaching and learning. Um, but we do know that. It will, we will get there and that our students will be flourishing once again. So. While they might have taken a little bit of a dip and some um. Have shown that they've continued to grow. It's really important that we continue and do what's right for our kids. Um, the data that I love to share is 17,000 books checked out at Groton Middle School. We've got kids who are really reading. And some information that came to me from, um, from Groton Middle School today. Was that the Connecticut Writing Project Contest on poets. Um, we had three winners. We had a gold, silver and two honorable mentions. And the one that um, was the gold was um, a young man who wrote about his dad going out to sea. So how, how wonderful in Groton that, you know, he has this vehicle, this writing tool, that he can express himself. And I will definitely send this out to, in board notes so that you can read it, but I was so proud. So data is done. We collect data in so many ways. But whether it's informal or formal, data is always meant. To help improve our instruction and to help meet the needs of our kids. That's really what it's all about. So um, I will stop sharing.
So board members, I will not stop any conversation about this waiver program tonight. I promise I will not. Um, but just to know that this, I plan to have this at our very first committee of the whole meeting. Um, so that Susan can um, do a deeper dive with us about what that means because I know many of us. Have received lots of comments from um, parents and teachers um, about their concern about uh, about stuff. And so um, the only way I know how to get ourselves educated um, is to have us be able to have a deeper dive. But Susan, thank you for sharing. You have worked very hard on this and you should be proud. Um, but I will entertain any, any uh, conversations or comments or questions from the board. Dean.
Thanks. Um, my understanding. Is that there are a lot of districts that are seeking waivers uh, of this program. The, the theme seems to be. Well, we're doing pretty well with reading. We don't need this. This is in fact, is our kids will do better under what we're doing than under this program. Also, by the way, it's gonna cost money. So uh, one of the stats thrown out is that better than half of the alliance district schools have kids that fall below. I can't remember what grade levels fall below. Uh, reading competency and that may be the, the genesis uh, for this. But uh, so you sound like you're confident in what we're doing, that this program isn't going to actually improve anything. Uh, but for, as for the, as far as the cost is concerned, you had any idea if we were to have to implement something, what the state's requiring? What this might cost the district additionally?
So the amount of money I've heard is 600 million statewide. For all these books and workbooks. Um. And you know, we have really invested in literacy with our DODIA grants. We have classroom libraries that we continue to upgrade. We have libraries that you know, our work together with this board. There were times when we weren't really funding libraries like we should have, but we certainly are funding them now. So it's really important that our kids have access to real quality. Reading and um, literacy, literature. And I think that, but we want all kids to access it. So we have to build a bridge for some kids. Not all kids learn to read at the same time, just like they don't learn to walk and talk. So it comes at a really great cost. There are actually Dean, only 11 districts in the state of Connecticut. That have actually implemented any of these five programs. So all the other of the 169 are, really have crafted their own curriculum, you know, under their boards um, work. So we, we have our own curriculum. We have a lot of different programs that we use. We have partnered with Teachers College. But we also have programs in Wilson, um, especially for special education. We have leveled literacy intervention. We have the Hagerty for phonemic awareness. I had to draw this chart out and it took me two pages. To put all the different resources that Groton has to meet the needs. The various needs of all of our students. So we are, we are being asked to pick a universal screening in reading and we've been working. Phil and Tom were doing this. You know, way back a year ago and we're continuing to do that, but we feel like we have a better, better handle on that. On some of the resources that the state is actually recommended. So we will be purchasing one of those um, next year, but I don't, I think that's probably at the cost of about $20,000. Um, versus $600 million or, you know, $100,000. So. And that's for an assessment and that it's an assessment that also. Um. Do, it does some practice with kids, so it, it's an intervention tool as well as an assessment tool. So um. I don't know if that answered all of your question, but.
No, I got.
Comes with a price tag. And you're right, a lot of districts are, are really feeling like we need to get back after COVID and we do have work to do. And, but we believe in all those things that the legislators believe and the state believes as far as those belief thoughts. So.
William, I saw you had your hand up and then it went down. Do you have a question?
Uh, I'll bring it up at the COW.
Okay, thank you. Andrea.
I just wonder at that COW, if you could give us an idea of where this came from, what data was it? It um. Founded on, and where did this question come from at the legislative level?
I believe it was one of, it came through one of the caucuses originally. And um, I, I don't really, I could find out though. Let me do some investigation on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Um, and Susan, is it safe to say that um, if people have questions that they want to make sure that get addressed? Um, for this agenda item, just to kind of give it to you so that you can um, that you can give some research to it or, or give some thought to it?
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
I will actually share also my testimony that I'll be giving on Wednesday and you'll get a copy of this slideshow. Um, I've been kind of knee deep in this, so I have got. More publications that I haven't published. But I've been reading a lot and learning a lot and um, but I've had a team working with me side by side, so. I didn't do it alone.
Thank you, Susan. Um, and I believe you and um, Phil kind of condensed your, your reports and I, it looks like we're just gonna go right down to the business manager.
That's right. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I'm going to put attachment number one up on the screen. This is our object code summary through, uh, through last week. Um, this shows that uh, we're projecting. An unexpendable balance uh, for this year of 47,176. Uh, which is less than 0.1% of, of the budget. So just, uh, we have very, very slim. Um, uh, uh, positive balance. Uh, so we are uh, better than the budget uh, in salaries due to uh, some retirements. And uh, in special ed tuition, uh, due to a reduction in some state placements. Uh, but we are unfavorable uh, in energy and fuel costs as well as the addition of, of two buses. Uh, so that, that's what brings us to that 47,176 number.
I would like to add though, Ken, we asked principals to kind of hold off on that last 25% until we really feel like we're coming through this.
You're right, yes. I'll stop sharing.
Beverly? Beverly. Bev, I see that you have your hand up, but you're muted.
Yep. Um, Ken, is there anything on this attachment that we should be concerned about?
Um, uh, uh, like you, you mean, are there some concerns uh that some of these costs could go beyond what what we're predicting? Um, I think the the salaries are pretty well um um set. Um. Uh, you know, there is a concern uh for energy and fuel, but I think we have a good estimate in there. Uh. Um, it it's always possible that special ed tuitions can come in higher than what we're anticipating. Uh, this is based upon the number of uh special ed students we have currently placed. But if somebody comes into the, into the uh district, that could throw that out of, out of whack. Uh, but I, I think we're, we're somewhat safe. We're, 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 well, we got uh four more months. Um, I'm hoping we can, uh, we can, we can make it through um. The end of the year.
Thank you.
Any other questions about? I cannot believe like that thin margin and Beverly, that was a really good question, but what do we, what do we do? Um, Rita.
I'm not sure if this is the time um to bring this up or if we should do it later. But I, I noticed that um. The town manager had sent an email to Mr. Knight about um what our budget was. And that we had a special meeting and it was passed. And normally we do that, that all at a public meeting. There are regular meeting at the end of the month. So I think there are a lot of people out there that doesn't know now that the superintendent's budget was adopted by the board. And I think we should be letting the public know at this meeting. What exactly the percent of increase is, what, what is our budget now? Um, because I, I saw Ken's reply to the town manager that they're complying. The budget book, it doesn't have to be into March fifteenth. But we did have that meeting. Nobody really else was online to see it. And I feel that we should discuss that. I don't know if you want to do it with the business manager. Like what he said to the town manager today? Or not? So the concern that I have that we had a meeting, we had a vote. And it wasn't at a large um, our regular meeting. And I feel people don't know that now it is our budget, what the percent of increase is. Most people don't know in the town of Groton, and I feel that it's something that should be made public. At a meeting like this.
Okay, um, I, I guess your point is um valid. Um, I think that Ken was just trying to meet the twenty-eighth deadline um to make sure that the, that the town received our budget. Um, but for those of us, for those people who are online right now, um according um. Uh, blah, 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 blah. Let me start the sentence one more time. Um, to what um Rita was um. Uh, alluding to is that we had a, a budget meeting. I, I was getting worried that we were not going to be able to get it through. Um. What I mean by that is that I wanted to make sure that we meet the twenty-eighth deadline of, of the charter. And it is now the board's budget um as of last Wednesday. Um, and it's a two point nine seven increase. Um, and the, the budget um is eighty-one million. Five hundred and ten thousand six hundred and twenty-seven. Um, and so it's now the board budget and we're going to be um as Portia Borderline uh mentioned earlier. Uh, we will be going to the town um town council probably pretty soon. Um, to kind of talk about our budget and also we will, there will be a public hearing where we'll be able to present um the work of the budget as well. But thank you, Rita.
I, I also feel that you should usually when we do this at our regular meeting. Um, it wasn't a unanimous vote and there were a couple of board members not present. So I, I, I think that that should, you know, you should always say what the vote was, how many people were there. To me, that, that's why we often did this at a regular meeting as opposed to a special meeting.
So I was nervous that we didn't because the twenty-seventh is pretty. Pretty quick to the twenty-eighth. Um, and we do have it in public record because it's in recording and it's in writing.
Right, right. But it's still not the same as if it was done at our meeting. So I, I mean, I won't go labor into anymore. I just feel that it was very important that everybody online and in the public would know. What, what our budget is going to be. That it's the board budget now.
Thank you. Any other? Um, so Ken, you can move on to the insurance.
Okay. Um, I'm putting up attachment two. Uh, this is the health uh. Health, health insurance claims uh through the month of December twenty twenty-two. Uh, you'll notice that for the month, um. We are at eighty-three point seven percent of budget. Uh, and for year to date, seventy-seven point seven percent. Uh, this is about the time of year that it starts to uh, it, as you can see, the trend uh is getting higher and higher. Uh, as, as the um deductibles are used up. Um. And so we will, we should anticipate to see um. The uh, the percentage go higher. Um, and we're anticipating utilizing the entire um uh budgeted or um amount. Uh, for, for the year. Uh, in, in comparison to December twenty of twenty twenty-one, that was at a hundred and nineteen percent. So we're actually are doing better than last December, uh, but it could just be a matter of timing, uh, and so we'll, we'll see in the next report. Um. Uh, how that, how that fares. Take that down. Yeah.
Matthew.
Thank you, Kim. Uh, I wonder if there's ever going to come a time where I don't keep learning something and realize there's something that I've missed. But uh, in addition to the anthem cost for administering the program for us, we're self-insured, but it's administered. Of an annual budget of around twelve million dollars. We also have something called total fixed costs, which uh if. As I read this, would be projected to one point two million dollars over the course, cost of, course of a year. And I have no idea what total fixed costs we have beyond what we're paying for anthem. Could you help me understand that, Ken?
Sure, the, this uh, this schedule is broken down. Uh, the first, the first uh, a few columns. Are all about the claims. You're, you're right. We are self-insured, so these are the actual claims put in by the, by the help, uh, the members of the health insurance uh. Uh, plan. Uh, the fixed cost, that's the cost that Anthem uh charges us to administer. So that's their cost for both administering. It's also the cost for the um, for the stop-loss uh insurance that we have. Uh, so that's covered under that fixed cost. And then, then this, this column right before that pink one is the total cost. So that's, that's everything altogether.
I, I, I thought that the. The cost of anthem for administering it was that one million dollars a month. And so if I'm understanding you correctly, this one point two million is the cost of reinsurance?
It's, it's the cost of administering and the cost of the insurance. Um, the million dollars a month number, is that the one in the pink column?
That's the one in the pink column.
Yeah, that, that's, that's our estimate of the, of the monthly uh cost, the monthly total cost. So we're really comparing that total cost with the anthem monthly cost. It's, it's kind of the number they come up with to say, this is what you should expect. Uh, or any particular month.
Okay.
That's more of like a budget, if you want to think of it that way.
Okay, thank you very much.
Nice question. Thank you, Matthew. Beverly.
Thank you, Ken. Um. Ken, are you projecting a savings in this account? At the end of the year?
No, I, I, I think we're going, I, I, I would think we're going to be right on. Um, the, the way the trend works with uh, with our, our health insurance, because it's a high deductible uh insurance plan. Uh, what happens is uh the members go through their own deductibles in the beginning part of the year. So you typically see you're below budget in the beginning part, but then as you go towards the ending part of the year, it, it goes the other way. So. Um, so I, I anticipate that will, this will be spot on to the um, uh, about twelve, a little bit over twelve million dollars uh in total cost.
Thank you, Ken.
Any other questions for Ken? So the next one that we have is the Director of Buildings and Grounds. I don't see him on. Oh, there he is. I didn't know if you were getting busy for tonight.
I think I'm ready for this, so.
Okay, all right, here you go.
Good evening. Um, so I have uh above four items that I want to report on. Um, uh, the first, uh, I, there were some questions about the, the Fitch uh High School sewer. Uh, repairs that we uh need to make. Uh, and. They have been temporarily repaired and uh the project itself, we have submitted. As a C I P, so we're waiting to hear on that. I believe we're meeting on March eighth. With the planning commission and we'll be going through that process at that time. Um. You, you may have seen or you may have heard that uh we uh had, had the new HVAC system uh installed at Fitch High School. That was uh in uh poor shape um. Due to uh salt air. Uh degradation. Uh, it was a fifteen-ton unit and it was lifted up and installed last week. On the holiday and. Uh, we're just waiting for a few warm days uh. So that we can uh do the startup on that, so. We need some warmer weather to do the startup and that will be coming up uh hopefully soon. Um. To uh, one of the other things that's going to come up later in the meeting are the uh acceptance of the Cutler. Uh, Elementary and Westside Elementary School projects as uh having been completed. Uh, we're now in the warranty period on those projects. Um, meaning in, in, and different systems may have different length of uh warranties. So any uh concerns that we have, we've been working with contractors uh. Uh, with uh warranty issues. I do see that uh our Public Works Director Greg Hanover is online. Along with Kelly Nelly, who was the Arcadis, the project manager for those projects. Uh, so I believe that they'll be uh available for questions when we get to that portion of the meeting. Um. I did hear um. Uh. Portia's uh concerns about A E D machines and I think we're probably all uh probably concerned about that. Um, I did uh text uh. Wendell Gaston, our custodial supervisor who handles those. And he gave me a listing of where they are included in the schools and her, 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 her description of it was uh pretty accurate, so. We will be working on that. Um. Uh, purchasing some more and getting those uh in, in uh. Uh, different spaces. There are some at the high school that are portable that athletics has, so. Um, I would be surprised if um. If a gym class goes out to the field, I, I'd be surprised if they couldn't take a portable one from, from the athletic department out to the field with them. Rather than having to go into the uh field house for it, but uh we can check with Mr. Romano on that. We'll do that uh this coming week.
Thank you, Sam. Jay. Jay, did you not have a question?
Sorry about that. Um, Sam, I just have a question. I know that um. At the elementary schools, there were difficulties with the floors um when they're originally installed, and I just want to make sure that. Um, the repairs that were made to those have um. Uh. Are considered permanent. And is there anything else that we should be aware of? I'm just, I'm concerned about making this vote and then having something come up later, like we did with the middle school.
Uh, yeah, the, the, the floors uh had, had a problem and they were actually all um, all, all those areas were replaced. Um, Kelly might be able to address it in more detail, but uh. Uh, for sure, uh, new tiles were purchased. The old ones were, were taken up and new tiles were laid down and. We haven't had any main concerns. Uh, maybe a tile here or there that has a problem, but. Not unusual, uh, maybe a glue failure or something like that, but uh certainly nothing like uh what happened during the construction period. So that's all been taken care of. Um, and again, uh, we're in the warranty period, so i- if anything did occur, we, we'd still be able to handle it that way, I believe.
I, I'm going to recognize, Jay, were you done? I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, thank you.
I'm, I'll recognize Rita and then Bev.
Um. Could you tell us how long the warranty period is?
It, it's uh, warranty periods are different depending upon what the system might be.
Okay. All right.
Most warranties are about a year. There are some two-year warranties and of course, the roof warranty is much longer than that.
Right. Um, I, I believe um when we spoke to, we had a meeting and Mr. Romano came to the board and spoke to us. We had a concern also about the A E Ds. And he said that all the sporting events like for track, they do bring one down to the field. He said that they have them, they go away on the buses if the students are away. But it'd be nice to hear from him again, you know, just to alleviate any other concerns. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Beverly.
Okay, um, Sam, one thing I noticed when I was at um things, uh magnet school volunteering for the uh. Groton Community Meals was that the water pressure seemed kind of low in the kitchen area. Is there a reason why the water pressure is so low? It didn't come out like, like in my kitchen with force. It came out real, like no force behind it at all.
And that was in the kitchen?
Uh huh.
I haven't had any complaints from the kitchen people, but I'll, I'll uh write it down and I'll, I'll check into it this week.
Okay, thank you.
We're happy to share our space with you uh with the, with the community meals. Uh, it's an important uh thing for, for us to be doing, so. We're happy that things are working out there.
Yeah, I love that.
And we're very thankful to be there, so thank you too.
Bev, Bev, thank you for your service around that. Like, that's such a big deal, deal. Thank you. Andrea.
Well, I don't know if this is the, the place to say this, but. Uh, I just wanted to reinforce what Portia was talking about. Uh, when I was a, a. Maybe a first-year teacher, that was quite a while ago, but it doesn't matter. Because if it happens once, it, it, that's too many times, but. It's not un, un, unlikely that um. A problem could occur so that a child needs the uh, the assistance of that machine. Because um, there was a, a young woman who had a heart attack. On the field, on the track. When I was at Fitch Junior High School, so it's not out of the question.
Thank you. Anything else for Sam? If not, we're going to move on. And we're going to move on to committee reports. Um, policy.
Okay, you have um. I believe it's two that are coming to you today. Uh, we, we spent a great deal of time. On graduation requirements. And I'm hoping that that will. Uh, it's a first reading. Um. But if you have any questions by all means, this is the time. And um. The uh, the library. There are two uh from, from the library. And again, we spent a great deal of time with the librarians on that. And I, coming up is going to be um. Promotion requirements for the middle level, so that's where we are.
Curriculum?
Yeah, we met on uh February twenty-second. Yeah. And uh, we focused on the Fitch High School Program of Studies. Uh, there's a number of classes that are being renamed. Uh, because um. Just for basic. Uh, compatibility. Um. Nothing, and some things that I haven't been in process, they haven't used in years and just taking them out of the program and studies because there's. They haven't been in place. Um, we also discussed the Global Citizenship and Freshman Academic Seminar. Um, and freshman academic seminar, it's, it's been deemed is, is no longer necessary, and so that's being eliminated. It's a half-credit course. And um, the Global Citizenship is a half-credit course. Um, and. Will help, this is a part of the M Y. And will help, this is a part of the MYP. And helps, there's a portion of it that helps the students learn how to create their final project or their personal project, which is going to be a requirement for their graduation because it's part of the capstone. I did forget one thing. There was, in the Program of Studies, a number of the courses are being going from full year to half year. So one from one credit to point five credit, such as foods. Because students, this is a very popular, popular class. And the teachers have felt that they can condense the curricula enough that they can get down to a half credit. That way, making it more accessible to more students. So I wanted to say, you know, there was a number of, you know, collaborations were done with the, with the students. I mean, the teachers at Fitch High School and I want to appreciate their hard work. And they're looking to accommodate more to students to have, you know, greater access. And I was very appreciative of what they were doing. They showed us what they, their thoughts and, and they gave us good reasoning. I'm sorry if I can't remember it all. Andrea, is there anything else that I missed?
Rita?
Oh, I had a question for Liz. Were these classes that were going to have credit, were they electives?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, there, yeah, absolutely. It's nothing, nothing core. Okay, it's all electives. Believe me, I was on that one too.
Thank you.
Yep. And we will, our next, our next, we've already set our agendas for the next two months. So if there's anybody who's got something that would, yeah, we were overachievers this time. So if there's anything that you have, you're interested in, please let us know. Okay? Thank you very much.
Communications.
I've got to unmute myself. Communications met today for our February meeting. The three items to report on. The first is, we have a number of PTOs, booster clubs, et cetera, each of which communicates both with their targeted membership and sometimes with the general Groton population. We'd like some Board of Education feedback on our desire to provide a forum for these groups to discuss enhancing their communication effectiveness, avoiding date conflicts, successes to replicate or challenges to avoid. So could we place this on our next BOE Cal agenda? So we can share a little bit more and get the board's suggestions, objections and/or support so we could move forward on this. This is part of the desire to have an interactive communication policy to benefit some of these groups. So I guess that's requested, we could get that on the Cal agenda. The second item is the, we, the just, the Communication Committee Specialist Rebecca Bayes introduced us this evening to a new communications platform that's had a successful pilot at Thames River. It looks like it has some wonderful advantages dealing with functionality, efficiency, and improving our outreach to our diverse population. It looks wonderful and we support a full board presentation by Clint Kennedy, Jamie Giordano, Rebecca Bayes at your convenience. I think the board will be very happy to get that report. We spent most of our time, however, working on our school district strategic communication plan. I had said a while ago, I hope we'd be to you next month with a completed plan, but we have been going over this line by line, very vigorously trying to make Andrea proud of our grammar. And we look forward to getting to this to you as soon as possible, but it's still a work in progress. Thank you.
The work, Jay?
So Finance and Facilities did not meet in February since February was all finance anyway. However, we will be meeting next week.
Super, thank you. The work of the four committees has just been really amazing. The leadership of the people who have done stuff, thank you very much. I mean, like you've really moved this district forward in many different ways. And for the staff that supports those committees, I say thank you, thank you, thank you. Negotiations, I think I, it was already mentioned, we will be going into our negotiation time very soon with a pair of professionals. And I think that all of us kind of look forward to having that. And the next would be Learn, which would be Rita.
Thank you. The Learn regular monthly meeting was February 9th. We had a presentation from the superintendent from Region 17, which is having killing worth. His name is Jeffrey Weeby. And he shared his district goals and challenges and successes. They did not lose a lot in terms of their scores for students because they went back to school that September full-time. So it was one of the districts in the state that went, went full-time and not part-time that September or August. Learn is also actively looking for a new site for their student support services, Transition Academy. They're 18 to 21-year-old students because there is a waitlist there and as well as their Ocean Avenue Learning Academy. And that is the second floor is the students are now occupying it. It's just about completed. The playground is, the two new playgrounds are beautiful. And I have been on that building committee also, which we have met frequently. Let's see, Learn, oh yes, this pertains to some of our students. Learn is no longer going to be offering kindergarten programming at the Friendship School in Waterford. They've decided instead to have a birth, a programming for zero to 22, 22-month-old children. As, and also a let's say a regularly, a regional self-contained special education classroom. That would be less restrictive than students who would be placed at the Ocean Avenue Learning Center. So, so they need these open spaces. Fifth grade will go to the Magnet School in New London. The regional multicultural Magnet School will then be a K through five. And no longer will the Friendship School be used for kindergarten. There's a long waitlist for the district-wide placements for students at the Ocean Avenue Learning Center. Right now, there are at least 26 students from our surrounding districts on that waiting list. So there's a real need. Yeah. I think also they talked about the breakfast, that the legislative breakfast that was, was happening on January 13th, which was, I think Susan, I believe you were at. And then also about the House District Bill 5003, which includes a proposal to remove Magnet School tuition responsibility from sending districts, which would be wonderful. We really need to talk to our local legislators about moving this forward and putting it on the state rather than on districts to send children to Magnet Schools. It would be wonderful. That's it. Thank you.
Rita, a point of clarification, the program that will be at the Friendship School, is it going to be a birth to three program?
It's birth to 22 months. For some reason, rather than, I don't know why it's not 24 months because then they're three years old. They could go in as three years old, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but this is a very, very young, there is nothing in the area for that, those young children. You know, zero, zero months to 22 months that have a need for services. I'm not sure why they're not doing it the next year, but it's probably because of space and the amount of staffing. They only have one classroom.
So is this going to be, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to visualize it. Are they trying to like then do like a birth to three model? Like, like the public law birth to three model? Are these children who are going to be able to come to Learn because they have development, they've, have been identified?
Yes. Yeah.
So, okay, I'll ask, I'm sorry, I'll go offline. I'm, I'll go offline with my question, sorry.
We might, you might want to talk to the Early Childhood Center at Learn. They would know more about it and it would be for next August.
Okay.
And then they're also looking for an expanded site. Because Waterford owns the Friendship School. And there's a lot of traffic issues there because it's right close to Waterford High School. So they're looking for another site that they would build a new school. But, but by the time they do that, it'd be like four or five years. But, you know, a much bigger center that would also have 18 to 22-year-olds. So it sounds very complicated and I hope I'm not continuing on the building committee at that point.
All right, thank you. Thank you, thank you, Rita. Um, the Town Council, the RTM Board of Ed, we met and I reported on that last time in its meeting quarterly as voted on by the, the leadership of that group. We did have, last week, we did have a meeting with the AGSA, the DEA and the Board of Ed. And the issues that we talked about, where there was a come, some transportation issues in terms of a couple of buses were not consistently getting on time. And there was a huge discussion on the Connecticut SEDS, which is this special ed. It's an online where teachers kind of go online and put all the documentation for each of the students. And I think eventually the hope is, is that it's going to streamline the process. However, it's less than optimal at the present moment. And I actually have put this down as an agenda topic for us just to kind of know about and where we at because it's, it's a huge concern for the teachers in our district. And so I want to make sure that we get that.
Can I just say that we did report back to Denise Doolittle and she's crafted a survey that went out to the special ed teachers to be able to give more direct support to what their needs are. So hopefully we'll glean from that survey, some of the specifics that she can either report to the state or that we can help support our teachers with. And then I gave Sam the information on the buses, the specific information. We also have had our coffee chat. So Bill and I are putting together some frequently asked questions, you know, around the district. So we're working on some things that I hope our staff will see that we're really responding to them and their questions.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Susan. Another thing that was talked about was Andrea, if you can kind of perk your ears up. This is about having us look at our Board of Ed policy around substance abuse and see if it really does address things and how they come down into the middle school and elementary school. Just so that our policy kind of is relevant to present day experiences or possible present day experiences. And we also, there was questions about, also just kind of, I think along with that was the changes in possible health curriculum and taking a look at making sure that it's also more relevant to what's happening. And as always, there's a huge concern about having substitutes and para substitutes and having paras in our school district. And I think that, I think I got, I think I got.
You got it. Yeah.
I think, just, just one more that I believe was very important. And that was about, there's a new person that is in charge of the VNA, all our school nurses. And the policy, each school seems to be doing something different. So we need to look at our policy and the, and also the town about sick children. They said they send them down, some come back and some schools, others are sent home. So there, there's something about the policies that need to be looked at. And when we talked about the vaping and THC, you know, and for young children, talking about gummies, these can get into the hands of young children very, very, very easily. And, you know, we need to really have that starting, a lot of our teachers said, not just later in middle school or something, but actually starting in kindergarten now and go right through. So our curriculum probably will need to be changed up for that.
Yep, you got it. Thank you. But, and it's not a policy change, but I'll recognize you just a second. It's not a policy change. It was just more about them following
Right, regulations.
The regulation, following them consistently. And I know that Susan said she was going to get that to Denise as well. Beverly?
I don't know if this is the right time, but since you're talking about vaping, I hear vaping is a big concern up at the high school. And I heard Portia talk about that at the Town Council meeting and ask about putting vape detectors. I guess there's like some kind of detective, you could detector you could put in the bathrooms. And I talked to some of the high school people and they do say that that is a big concern up at the high school, the vaping.
So I don't know. Already got someone looking into that, Beverly. I agree that I said, it doesn't matter what it costs, let's get it into those bathrooms. And there's a few students who've been expelled for THC and vaping. So I do have some kids up here at Central Office. So there are consequences. So, but I agree, I think having some kind of a detector. And we've got to do a lot more proactive work. The principals are reaching out to GASP and to other organizations to have smaller groups, not a whole auditorium full of kids, but you know, more on grade level or smaller groups to have those conversations, get it in the health classroom. And also maybe one of those summits like we used to do back in the day where we can bring parents around with kids to talk about how dangerous this could be. So.
Thank you, Beth. Groton Scholarship? Dean has a question. Oh, Dean, I'm sorry, Dean.
I had a thought that just came. It had to do with vaping. And I think we're all familiar with programs where we tried to inform the kids, scare the kids, et cetera. But if anybody knows teenagers, they're dense. I'm just trying to, I'm not, it's a big revelation.
They're immortal, they're immortal, Dean.
What I'm trying, exactly, they're immortal. So what I'm thinking of is, is there anything we can learn from people who, and I don't know how this is done. I'm no expert in this. Is there anything we can learn from people who, from kids who've gone through all the programs, who've listened to all of this stuff? Don't do drugs, they're bad, okay? Okay, it'll be, this is somebody, you know, meet somebody who was there, don't do what they did, but they go ahead and they do it anyway. What is the roadblock? How do you get those kids to, you know, to flip? I'm not saying it's part of a program, I'm just saying and trying to figure out. It's one thing to say, let's just put in the health curriculum, make sure you tell kids, you know, that this stuff is bad. They know it. They're not getting it. So why aren't they, most of them will get it, but there's a few enough that won't get it. Why don't they get it? What is it about them that makes it so difficult for them to, for them to get it? I'm, it's, it's an open-ended question. I don't expect an answer.
Okay, so I think what I want to kind of stay back into our, our agenda. But I see that this is a very valuable sort of agenda topic for us to kind of talk about that. Especially about what do we talk about, what happens in the DARE program? I see that as, as a value for us. Because I think it's a, I don't think, it's a big concern. And so I am, I'm going to move us past that though and, and, and put that down as a noted, as a, as a, as an agenda item on the committee of the whole. Groton Scholarship, Liz?
Hi. There's a fundraiser that is happening this week on the fourth, on March 4th at Chipotle. And it's a, I believe it's 30% that if you, that the Groton Scholarship will get from Chipotle of all proceeds. So if you like Chipotle and even if you don't, because you know, some people like it, some people don't, but it would be really wonderful if we could do that. I don't know if you got the flyer. Susan, did that go out?
I think that did go out. I'll check with Joyce.
Okay, because I, I was, I was under the impression that it only went to some people. And I really think, yeah. And so I wanted to make sure that that flyer goes out to everybody. We're down a little bit in those, you know, the donations, the, but it's still, it's just March, you know? And we have to encourage, and I see that Mr. Kelleher is on. And so Ted, I want to know how we can encourage kids to apply for this scholarship because there are a lot of opportunity for students to have some sort of a scholarship. Quite frankly, they try to give some, everybody something. So we need to really work, trying to work with the school. And they, they've been very responsive, but are really trying to help our students understand that this is a value. This is, this is a resource for them and it's just for them. So March 4th, Chipotle? So, March fourth, Chipotle. I'll be at History Day, so. I won't make it. Yeah.
I I I really feel that, you know, the councils at Fitch are the ones that always, you know, encourage the students to apply. So maybe a little note out, maybe the Mr. Keller could remind them to do that.
Thank you, Rita. Athletics?
Athletics Fields has not met as the town continues to grapple with uh, Clotchester.
Trails?
Trails Committee meets quarterly and will meet in March.
Library?
Library last month, uh, discussed the methodology, they're working on policies, they discussed the methodology of dealing with complaints seeking de-accessions. Um, their solution is to have a very thorough questionnaire to determine why somebody wants to see something de-accession. The person must be a Groton resident to make a complaint. And that policy has been adopted. Uh, the meeting this month focused on policy for uh, acquisition of accession, acquisition of collections. That's all.
And Permanent School Building Committee?
All right, and then the State Council, we haven't met, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, so the next is our action items on the consent agenda. Which is all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. I will in, I would uh, accept a motion uh, for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Rita. Can I have a second to that? Andrea? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of passing uh, the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. Um, the board would like to think, thank the Colombian Charities of Connecticut Incorporated, which is in affiliation with the Connecticut State Council of the Knights of Columbus, has donated four hundred and twenty-five dollars to be used by the Transition Academy. We say thank you very much. We are now at our old business and this is um, uh, this is actually a second reading of the policy. Um, and Liz, would you be willing to read the motion for number one, please, on old business?
Certainly. To approve policy P six one seven two point seven, mentoring programs for students as a second reading.
Can I have a second to that?
I'll second it.
I got Rita. Discussion? Andrea?
To say that we're ready to go with this and I'm hoping that it meets the board's approval in all ways. And again, to um, to uh, to thank Sharon Schick and um, and Jen Anthony.
Thank you, thank you. I didn't write it down, so thank you very much. And Jen Anthony has been um, just uh, spectacular in her presentation about running the program and and her heart is in this program, so. Hoping that we'll just move with it.
Cool. Beverly?
Thank you, Kim. Um, I just have one question and it it's not so much the policy, it's on um, ongoing mentor supervision and support. And it says that uh, contact should occur bi-weekly early in the program and then progress to a less frequent schedule, and that's between the mentor supervisor and the the mentor coordinator and the mentor. What is, what do you mean less frequent? Is it going to be like once a month, once every three months? That the coordinator is going to be in touch with the mentor or?
I think it really would be according to kind of a gradual release like you would mentoring a teacher maybe. So in the beginning, you might have to do it on a more regular basis, but as the person becomes more confident and ready. You know, a lot of our mentors um, need very little um, bit of support, maybe touching base every now and again. So I think it would be different for different folks depending on um, their, their level of comfort too.
So that's my understanding. That's how I interpreted that.
And are you going to get together with the mentors every year, like have a general type of meeting? And just have a discussion or what the rules are?
I I do believe there's an annual, it used to be a dinner, I don't know if we're doing dinner still, but it used to be an annual time when the mentors would come and we kind of celebrate and say thank you and it was time for information sharing. Because this is such um, a new program again, renewed program. Um, we've really been doing the training session and and meeting with individuals to get it going. So I will talk to Jen Anthony just to see if she has anything in mind for the end of this year.
I really like what Beverly just suggested because in the past we have had a dinner. And it, and that is a wonderful celebration, but it isn't what Beverly talked about, which is, you know, what went right, what, what didn't go right and what do we, where, how do we move forward? So I think that 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 we should not only consider, maybe.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was talking about. Just like you do with every year, the teachers get together at the beginning of the year. I think that would be something good for the mentors too.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you, Beth. Matthew?
I just wanted to say I had a chat with Jen and she was telling me that at this point we have thirty or so mentor candidates, which is phenomenal. Uh, and and it's the, the thanks go to Jen and Sharon without any question. Uh, there are still opportunities and so for all of the thousands who are watching on our YouTube channel, uh, please consider mentoring. Uh, you do not need academic credentials, you need to have an open heart and the love of helping a kid uh, make progress in his or her development.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those.
Can I just say something, Kim?
Oh, I'm sure.
No, no, I'm sorry, I just jumped in at the end. I just want to say that I am so glad to see that we're getting this program together again. And thank you to everybody, Matthew and Andrea and everybody else that were, was uh, important in putting this program together. Thank you.
Beverly, well, absolutely well said. Thank you very much. Um, yes. All right, all those in favor of the motion to approve policy P six one seven two dot seven mentoring program for students as a second reading, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. Dean? Would you please, under new business, would you be willing to read number, um, uh, number one motion, please?
I would.
Thank you.
Uh, move to approve policy P six one four six, graduation requirements as a first reading.
Can I have a second to that, please?
Second.
Thank you, Liz. Andrea?
Well, we have in-depth discussions on this, in particular, moving from twenty-six required credits to twenty-seven. And um, I'm moving that, that what we did, what we, what we do tonight will um, will, will answer any questions that they, that everybody must have about that. Uh, brings us, uh, Matthew did, did a great deal of um, investigation. And it brings us one credit above almost every other district. There are a few outliers, as he said uh, at the meeting, but it will bring us one above and it, and it puts us in line with what we did with the uh, the athletic requirements. So i- in terms of being one above most of the other districts. So I don't know if there's anything else that you want. I, I see Liz has her hand up, but Susan, is there anything you want to add?
Well, and I think that we looked at the NYPD requirements and it's important that our students in middle school all the way through grade ten take a foreign language every year. And so that's really what caused us to say we need that extra credit and we need it in world language specifically. And the way you roll these out, you, you can't just pull the rug from underneath the kids. So the kids who are already juniors and seniors, this won't be impacting until the, I think the class of twenty, twenty. Let's see, six and beyond. So you can see how it rolls out. So we keep some of the same things except for the language of the class, but um, we keep all the other things until that that next, this freshman class comes up and then it starts to change and those um, become um, more important. I know the board had a lot of discussion around kids taking eight credits every year and they certainly are required by this policy to do that, freshman, sophomore, junior year. Um, there are some seniors who either, you know, can take a period off, they can work, they can study. Um, and I would like to encourage those internships and tie it in with our careers program. So more to come because I think this still needs some more looking at. But for now, um, I think we've really made some progress and um, can see that we can make some future progress too.
I'm going to recognize um, Liz and then Matthew.
Thank you, Kim. I would appreciate if you would consider also adding a required credit to the three credits for three years of individuals and societies. Being that this is a core course of study. You have four years for language and literature, four years for sciences, four years for math, and you all know that there are four core areas. And the other fourth core area is social sciences or in, if you have here, individuals and society. I understand it's under the other humanities credits. However, social studies or the individual societies has already got two, one and a half credits that is mandated by the state. And that is US history in one, some form or another. At a minimum, which I really don't agree with, I really think it needs to be a, um, a minimum of one year. But that's another
Civics.
Battle is civics. And we all can see what happens when people don't know what their rights and responsibilities are as American citizens. And so and from the local level on up to the national level. So I really would encourage and I'm asking you to really consider, you know, let's be the leader in this. We don't need to be the followers all the time. We need to be the leaders and say we need our children to be better educated. Not just only in our math and science, which are extremely important and in our language, our English and language and literature, but also in our responsibilities as being American citizens. And so I think we really need to look at that. And as global citizens, and I know there's the global citizenship, citizens course half credit, but quite frankly, folks, this, I'm disappointed uh, in terms uh, as a you know, I just think it's one thing we could do to in, you know, to ensure our legacy. I mean, if you don't train our people to, in democracy, how are we going to let it survive? Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Um, Matthew and then Rita.
You're a tough act to follow, Liz. Um, I, as Susan well knows, I had uh, took some persuading because I had been suggesting we go from twenty-six to twenty-eight credits. My rationale at the time was that requiring enrollment in thirty-two credits over the course of the year and requiring only twenty-six or twenty-seven was an unstated acceptance, not an endorsement, but acceptance that one could register for a class, attend a class and not successfully complete fifteen percent or more of the classes and still get a diploma. I was concerned and wanted to be a leader. But it was brought to my attention that the completion of the NYPD personal project with its one credit is functionally, functionally in addition to the requirements that we have had. And so I enthusiastically support at this moment the increase to twenty-seven required credits. And I've also promised Susan that I pay close attention and possibly ask for a review of that next year to see if we can justify going to twenty-eight. Because we, we've talked about making Groton a place that people will really want their kids to attend and move here. And certainly uh, matching the rigor of our classes with the rigor of our requirements is a step in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Rita?
Well, I agree with both Liz and Matthew that I would like to see the twenty-eight credits. And also the four years for, I'm, I, I've never heard of three years of individuals and societies. There's an asterisk there. But where did that come from and what does that mean?
That's the social studies and that's through the, the international baccalaureate language on global citizenship. So those are the, the names.
Not everybody's going to be an international baccalaureate, so why do we?
They are all in NYPD through tenth grade. So we have that and then we also have in parentheses in the program of studies. Individuals in society is social studies.
But civics and US history, but there's so many more wonderful histories. I mean, the world's history, the AP World History class at Fitch High School is just phenomenal. I hope it's still there. Um, and so many others, so um, I, I, I'm really concerned with having that listed like that. Um, the other thing is, and when I'm looking at the guess, maybe it's a regulation, students at the middle school can receive high school credit for core courses taken at the high school and or courses at the middle school. That has never been the case before and I want to know whether or not these students that are going to receive high school credit, they always took the same exam, but they never received high school credit. If they could go to the high school and sit for the exam with high school students. Because having them take it at the middle school, um, you know, you just sort of, you moved on. So if you did Spanish one and two in the middle school, you went to Spanish three. You didn't get the credit for that, but you, it, it moved you up so that you could go on to take Latin or another world or French or another language.
So we've had that language since Mike Grenier was here.
I know that, I know that.
Well, the honors algebra one was one of the courses and then the world language um, course as well. So um, and then we've had students, you know, we have kids who, military children with a military compact that if they've already had algebra one and they come into the middle school, we have to provide algebra two and sometimes it's one or two students. So we wouldn't have a course for them at the middle school. They actually have gone to courses at the high school. So we've had about four or five kids per year that have taken high school courses, you know, um, at the high school. And so it really does give them access to rigorous courses for kids who really are ready for that kind of work. So and you're right, they do take the same test. The test is all designed along with the curriculum. The honors class, whether you're sitting in the seat um, in the middle school or the high school, and the high school has requested to have algebra one as an honors program as well at the high school.
Is it about, is this about graduation? I just kind of want to stay to the policy.
Yeah, because it's credits.
Okay.
It's definitely, it's right, right here, it's on page six one, um, six one four six. I really have a concern um, about that. And um, I, I just feel that if they're going to take that exam, they should be at the high school taking that exam in person. And even way back when my students, some, some students did take algebra two in the middle school. But then they didn't get the credit for it, but they went on to algebra three, they took calculus, you know, their sophomore year as opposed to their senior year. So it's, it's like they, maybe they didn't get the credit, but they got to move on to more advanced math. So I know this was something Mike put in, I'm just saying I, I question it and I and I would like to see the twenty-eight credits and also a little clarification. A little more clarification and not have the IB language for graduation requirements. I mean, it should be separate. You can have an IB one, you can have the NYPD up to ninth and tenth grade. But to me, it should be all like different. I mean, I just don't like the language. So.
Thank you, Rita. I'm going to recognize Dean and then Beverly.
Thanks. Um, my high school experience is not a benchmark of any sort, seventy-six to nineteen eighty, probably shadows of the space program. What I recall was you were required to take uh, four years of English, freshman to senior, three years of history. freshman to senior, three years of history was history. One and two, you started with Sumeria and you ended wherever the teacher wanted to sophomore year. And American history junior year, so three years of history. And then two years of math, two years of science. That was the minimum requirement. I don't recall that there was a language requirement. So it's hard for me to compare. The only thing that I can think of is I don't have a problem with this necessarily. My one issue is 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 do we have sufficient tracks for students who are moving faster? They're either working harder. There is such a thing. They're working harder. They're maybe not gifted, but they're better at something than than their peers are, and they're ready to move on to something. Uh, I was in middle school, ready to go to ready to go to algebra or algebra two. And there just was no such animal as what do you do with me? So um, I was trigonometry as well. That that's just me. So that's my concern. And I've seen where other school districts across the country have reined in the ability for students to go on to their tracks. It doesn't mean we have to individualize instruction. But a lot of school districts seem to be going down the road of let's have as many students as possible, all on one unified track. And they get options at the end of the at the end of their career. They get options that they're in their senior year. Um, which means they have not had a chance to take um some more advanced courses, advanced in respect with respect to their peers, that is. Uh, so that that's my concern. I can't tell from this whether this hinders that that process.
I would say though, Dean, that you're you're exactly right, that we're looking at more opportunities by having a campus. And really now working on a schedule that aligns better between both the high school and the middle school, so we can have more opportunities like that. Even sharing space. So I think there was um a health class or a dance class from the high school that came to the middle school dance theater. So using our spaces more creatively and also having more access to more rigor um is certainly part of the plan.
And just just to keep on this, I'm not gonna go. It's a whole giant topic, but the the phrasing of uh so English is out, language and literature is in, world language is out, language acquisition is in. I'm guessing that that's IB terminology.
It is.
Okay. It's not just we're not sort of
But we're also keeping parentheses, what the standard is that we all know and love the English, the social studies. So what we've called it before will also be there in parentheses.
Okay. There is a larger, and I realize that this is uh this is actually a state law. More of a philosophical problem. That has to do with, I don't know what page we're on, where it talks about. You know, uh, Board of Education will provide adequate student support, remedial services, et cetera. I know that's in the statute that's required by state law. What I don't know what our experience has been. It's one thing to teach students. They don't all learn at the same rate. They need different ways of being taught. Sometimes they gotta come at it. You gotta come at them a different way, another time. It could be a year before it clicks or what have you. There is also student input. Students are required to work. So I read this and also I read the state statute. And I'm thinking whose job is it to see to it that the kid's ready to graduate is competent in what they're supposed to be competent in? This almost reads, and again, just like state law, it reads as though no matter what, we're gonna keep throwing resources at the kid until they finally get it. It does that work? Does that let the kids off the hook in any way? Um, I almost don't even want an answer because they got us a whole nother discussion, but when I read that paragraph, that's what jumps out at me. What's the student's responsibility in all this? They used to leave kids back if they screwed if they screwed up. That always hung over our heads.
Yeah. Um, I would say that, you know, it it depends on, it says really specifically how many courses they have to complete successfully to earn their, you know, freshman, sophomore, junior um status. So um, that's it important in here. And I would say that between the the guidance counselors, two of them working with every assistant principal and taking parts of the alphabet, which personalize it a little bit and knowing those kids and and really working with them over the four years is really the ideal that we have. And they've been actually doing a lot of the legwork in looking at power school with kids and seeing if there's looks like they're in trouble. Then they have some options, whether it's during their C T L time and they can work with their teacher. Whether it's with Falcon Cafe or working with some tutors and interventionist during the day, um, that's all built in as support for kids who need it.
Right. What I'm getting that though is there are kids who do need it. Like I said, that that you have just have to keep coming at them from different angles, different times. Um, but I wouldn't want to be the guy that that worked his tail off to get that B minus only to have my the guy next to me not work his tail off figuring, well, no matter what, they're gonna, you know, they're gonna frankly, they're gonna babysit me until I pass the course. They're not gonna think about it quite that way. But there must be some people, there's a possibility anyway, of some kids taking advantage of the here you go, whatever resources you need, kind of this kind of environment. It's nothing we can address because it's right here in the, you know, it's right here in law. I'm just wondering what our experience has actually been. Do we have any proportion of the population that look like you know, they're not putting in their, you know, their effort. We're put the school district's putting in its effort. They're not putting in theirs, but there's no repercussion, really.
So so Dean, is is there language that you need to have doing that? I kind of want to go back into the policy, not to the practice?
Yeah, no, no, no. I'm I'm looking at the policy.
Okay.
Looking at the language, it's it's got still got the P up here.
Okay.
And I know that this is reflected in state law. There's nothing we can do about the language. It's the thought. It's the thought and the philosophy behind it is admirable, but I'm just wondering what our experience has been with you know, don't worry about it. You don't have anything to worry about. We're gonna throw all the resources at you till you finally get it. Does anybody take advantage of that and basically dial back their own efforts as a student? But
Yeah, I I mean, it's something we can, we certainly are looking at very closely this year. So it it's something I'd come back and report to the board a little bit more deeply with with some data for you.
I think that that's, I guess that was my question is i- i- are we sticking to the policy or d- does this bring us to the need to have a a better and and more enriched data um conversation so that we can find out whether people are just being thrown server um resources um what have you? I guess that's my point, Dean.
Yeah, if I could just add to that, we had that. That was my very question being at the meeting. I I watched the the um film again or the video again today, and I asked that same question. So it's not it's there's two of us asking that.
Yeah, I don't wanna be the bad. I don't wanna be the bad guy, but just curious.
All right. But we'll Let's bring it. Let's bring it to the committee, the whole with some with some more information around that. Um, Beverly and then Rita.
Um, thank you, Kim. Um, I just want to say I do agree with um Liz Porter about the four credits in um I'll call it social studies, but you're calling the individuals and societies. Um, Susan, can you tell me the pros and cons of not making that core subject for credits?
Well, I would say that we we really didn't want to, you know, add a lot of credits on here. We want our kids to graduate as well. And so we looked at a lot of data about what the typical number of credits were that kids were graduating with. And um so I for for this piece, we really felt it was essential to get that extra one language art, you know, world language credit in so that they would have to have at least two. So that was a priority for us at this point. But we are like um Matthew had said and Andrea had said, we are going to continue to look at this. So we'll come back at this, see how the kids do with this addition. And then see if we can um add something else, but I don't want to do it all at once. And remember, it's gonna be rolled out. Um, you know, to a class that are freshmen now. So I think we have to look at the data and um what the grad what the rate is that the kids are graduating with courses with credits.
So um so world languages is, in your opinion, and the committee's opinion was more important than individuals and societies, and that's why you went that way?
To have at least two world languages. Yes, we had to for the NYPD. Because that's um a stipulation to be an NYPD school.
So when you say two world languages, the the students have to have French and Spanish? What do you mean by that?
No, they have to have two credits of world language. So if they're in the French courses, you know, once they've done the carousel, if they decide to take French, then we want them to take those years in French. If they're in the Spanish, we want Spanish. But sometimes they do change. Sometimes they'll take French and then um, you know, American Sign Language or French and then Spanish. So depending on what they're interested in.
Beverly, do you have more?
Thank you, Susan.
Liz? I mean, um, I I was looking at Rita.
Rita, Liz. That's okay. I have some questions about the policy near the uh second to last page. When it says the Connecticut Seal of Bileiteracy. Using some of the terms that you have for our credits, and then you look at what the state is referring to. When they for an award for theirs, like Connecticut State Seal of Bileiteracy, they have English and one or more foreign languages, foreign language means world languages other than English. We're not in line with what the state is is ask, you know, like what, how the words that the state uses. So I think we really need, if you're gonna have that IB um, everything like that, and you also need to have it translated the regular way. Because not everybody's IB and you're only
I'm not understanding your question, though, Rita. Can you explain to me why you say that this isn't in line with the state?
Is using world language. There is not using terms like we're using that you have
Foreign language instead of world language?
But world language, we don't even have world language there. You're not even using world language. You're having language acquisition.
But I'm reading the page that is talking about the Seal of Bileiteracy.
Right.
And it specifically says
Um, world language.
Foreign language means a world language other than English.
Right, right. But we're not even using world language anymore. We're not using that term, those terms. So we're not sort of in line with what the state. And the other thing is, I know this is like word for word from the state. But when you look at of the award of high school diplomas, number two, and especially number four, if you've withdrawn from high school prior to to graduate to work to end the effort of World War Two, not receiving it as a consequence, you can receive it if you've lived in Connecticut for fifty years. I just don't know how relevant that is anymore.
I don't think so either, Rita. But it's one of those things that there might be someone there. I don't know that's still around. But I I agree with you. I thought that was kind of, you know, I have that same question. They do. They do. They do. I know. It does seem like it it should be able to go away at some point.
Yeah, I mean, I can see still the Korean War and the Vietnam War, but World War Two, they're really, I mean, not many people left them, about a hundred.
And and I had the same concern and I
Hey Rita, my father's a hundred and two.
I know. I know, but he's probably already had his diploma, right?
Oh, dear. I I even wrote to um on the up when I sent my notes to to Erica, I wrote, I don't care what the state says, this has to go.
Well, so do we have a sense about? Um, I mean, Andrea, do you have a sense about what you the second reading?
Yeah, it needs to go back.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Yeah, definitely. Yeah.
And if you have any other concerns, email me or Susan and we'll on the agenda.
Andrea, could you talk in the committee about not changing the language to like what Rita's saying to the IB language and keep it to the standard language?
If we're IB world district, we get authorized every every couple of years. So it's really important that we have the language that we use the language. Doesn't mean it's the only language. There's an equivalent to it. So we're gonna put out both. So I think that um, you know, that was decided when we, you know, years before I got here, when we became a diploma program and then an NYPD and then a careers program. So we definitely have a lot of rigor and relevance for our kids because of IB.
So that's not going away. Why can't we just have a glossary?
Yeah, I I that I will. We'll make it so it's easier to understand.
Right. And then so that addresses both both the concerns that the IB and the and the state.
Right, right.
Right. Susan, you have that for Erica?
Going back one more time. We've we've sweated bullets on this one. It's been three, four months that we've worked on this.
Thank you. So um I'm going to put forward the motion to approve policy P six, one, four, six graduation requirements as a first reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose?
Aye.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Abstain. Beverly.
So June, what's our count?
Do you want to do that?
Don't.
One negative and five.
No, not.
Yeah, that means it goes. That means it goes uh on, not back.
Yeah, it does. It does.
So
You have one no and three.
Yeah.
Abstention.
That's not what I
How many yeses? Because the abstentions don't count.
Yes, they do.
You have to count the yeses.
But the abstention goes into um in it goes into the favor. So for
Five yeses.
Five yeses?
Yes. That means that it goes ahead.
Yes.
That's that's not the conversation I heard.
Well, we, I think we need to look back though and make those adjustments and then bring that the adjustments back to the second
Ready.
Want to table it?
Everybody.
Yes.
I I think we can, we have another, we can get another policy meeting in before the end of March. So we, you know, we have another policy meeting. We can discuss it at policy and make some of those corrections.
This is Johnson. I don't think that's, is that correct according to Roberts? Like doesn't it say that if if um if the abstentions count as really they count as yeses? And that's not what I heard this conversation.
Well, if the extensions count as yes, I vote no.
Yeah.
No.
The extensions are as though are as though we're not here.
Right. That's right.
They don't count as yeses. They're just not there. They're not included in the vote.
The only the only time, yeah, if I might, the only time that abstentions come into play is if you have a requirement that you need a minimum number of votes to pass something. So that, for example, if six of us were all here, say, and six of us abstained and something passed two to one without having the rules in front of us. I'm, it's a pretty good guess that that would not be legit, even though a majority did carry. So that's the only time abstentions matter.
But we have five yeses. That's going to put us into that this is approval of the first policy and it's going to go back to the policy committee.
A point of clarification?
Yes.
It's my understanding that if the can policy committee recommends some changes that the floor, somebody on the floor could uh move an amendment to the uh proposed uh policy and that amendment, if it passed, could pass for a second reading. Is that correct or incorrect?
Well, that's
Try that again.
Readings to begin with, right? That we they pass the first reading. Then they come back to the first second reading, sometimes with edits.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what we're gonna be doing.
So if we pass the second reading with edits, then it can go into effect.
Right.
So we're not we're not losing any time.
That's right.
I mean, we can, we can come back as a board and 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 amend the second reading if we want to.
That's my point. That's my
Okay. But it passed, so we have the first reading. All right, um, I'm gonna um ask the board if we could, we have one more policy to do. But we have had people who have been on since six waiting to kind of talk about the Yeah, okay. Um, no, people who are at our meeting to talk about the field trip, they've been here since six. Um, and I would just like to get them on so that we um so that we're not having them wait longer. Um, Susan, um do you do you wanna do you wanna talk about these? Um, but you know what? I need to get this uh motion going. Um, Rita, would you be willing to read the motion for number three, please?
I will.
I will. To approve Fish High School's world language department's field trip requests to Costa Rica, Panama and Colombia, scheduled for July first, twenty twenty-four through July twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
Can I please have a, um, second? Matthew, thank you. And now discussion, please.
Hi, um, I ca, my camera doesn't, I don't know why it's not turning on, but.
This is the Vet Morales, who's one of our world language teachers at the high school. And she actually brought this proposal to us probably towards the beginning of the year and we've just had to put it on. I apologize because of all the work we've been doing around the budget. But she has run these before and very successfully and can tell us a little more about it.
Uh, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, great. Cause I, I feel like, cause since I'm not seeing, some people are not hearing. Okay. So, um, this trip is, uh, supposed to be for twelve days. It could or could not uh, have Columbia in it because Columbia is an extension. But just to say a little bit, the place in Columbia where we would be going would be Cartagena. And that's like the safest place in Columbia, which is like in the border of Panama. And, um, the first place would be Costa Rica and then Panama. And of course, uh, Cartagena would be at the end. Um, there are opportunities for kids to do fundraising. There's fundraising on the page for EF tours. Um, there's an opportunity for the kids to do college essays and get credit for it. Um, there's scholarships also available through EF, uh, for, uh, as much as a thousand dollars for about a hundred students around the country. So they can apply for that as well. Um, they can get college credit. You know, the EF is partnered with Southern New Hampshire University and they can get three, three college credits with that. Um, this, this is the, uh, an amazing opportunity. I know that the middle school has had trips to Costa Rica, but not the combination Costa Rica and Panama. And, uh, they're going to be doing snow clean. They're going to be going to, uh, the volcano in, uh, Costa Rica, thermal heated pools, kayaking, whitewater rafting. Um, I mean, so many things. They're going to be going to the, or we will be going to, um, the Ca, Panama Canal. Uh, that's a, an amazing opportunity right there. And, um, there is, in Colombia, they would be going to this island to go to a beach and have dinner with the traditional music and dancing. Um, what else? They're going to be, they're going to be doing a lot of things. This is a very nice trip for them. And, um, you know, last year I did the Portugal and Spain. And this company, just to say a little bit more, um, I did have a kid that had COVID. I stayed behind with the student. They paid for the parent to go. They paid for the parent to go and stay in the hotel in Por- Portugal while she was in quarantine. So they paid for all that. The only thing the parent had to pay was their meals. So that was a really good that she was there with her daughter and I was able to meet my group, you know, in Spain after that. So, um, I hope you guys really consider it and, um, you know, it's a great opportunity is not for four hundred and ninety more days. So, um, you know, they have plenty of time to, you know, we have plenty of time to, if they want to do a fundraising or, you know, there's also, uh, an app that they can download, uh, that it's almost like a GoFundMe, uh, kind of thing. And, you know, they can ask their relatives or anything, you know, for, for money and just upload it there for like Christmas. And, you know, so they have opportunity for them to raise money for this. And it's, um, it's really nice. So that was, that would be, this is my presentation. So I don't know, um, you know, just, uh, think about it. And, uh, I really hope that you guys approve it because it's, it's super nice. And it's from July's, uh, July first to July twelfth, if we do the extension.
And that's twenty twenty-four. So they have a full year to prepare for this.
Absolutely, yes. Yeah. Yep.
So before I, um, recognize, uh, board members, and I'll go Beverly, Dean and, um, Rita. Susan, on the, uh, on the transportation form, you did not sign it. Is there, is, do you have, um?
Well, because it's really something that has to be voted on the board, I tend to sign it after the board does, does the decision making.
Okay. I just see it as, as a, as a, like, do you, like?
I, I'm approving of the trip. Should the board, yeah, approve it. But you ultimately have to make that decision because it's out of country.
Yeah, I know. I just wanted to make sure that you were on board. I can't, how many other travel words can I use in the description? Um, so Beverly?
Uh, thank you, Kim. Um, can you tell me, Ms. Morales, on your, on the application, on the attachment, it says that, um, the students would be learning the importance of being immersed and learning about a different culture. But on the itinerary, they're doing snorkeling and water rafting and stuff like that, that they could do in the United States. So tell me, what part of this itinerary are they going to learn and be immersed in a different culture?
Um, besides those trips, besides all the fun stuff they're going to do, they have a, um, director of a tour that goes around, you know, when we go to the different cities, they, uh, go around and explain about the city and, you know, talk about the history of it. Um, you know, they, there's always someone talking about the history, even though they're going to go to a volcano and do all those fun things. There is some, you know, talk of history and, um, the background of, you know, the area where they're at. Um, we did it, you know, when we went to Peru, they did it, uh, in Spain as well. So there's always someone, uh, in the tour, the director or the people that are the specialists of that town that explain about the history of the town before they do anything.
Okay. It seems more like a fun tour to me than really a, uh, a, uh, an immersed educational tour. But that's just my view by looking at the itinerary.
Dean, did you decide not to? Or are you just talking now?
No, I have, I've got one question. Um, what's in, uh, Sarapiqui?
And I haven't seen like the whole itineraries or no, I don't know, like the, the different towns where, you know, they're going to be going. Um, let me look. Do you want to see?
I was just curious because I didn't recognize the name. So I didn't know what's there.
Oh, let me see. I have it here. Um, yeah, I don't recognize a lot of names because I am from Puerto Rico. So I don't, I don't know a lot about Costa Rica or anything. I'm, I'm going to be learning myself when I go there because I've never been either. So it's a, it's a learning opportunity for me as well.
Yeah. I do, I do have one, it's not a response or a retort to, to Bev's point. And that is that when you're dealing with children, sometimes you got to take the serious, the serious part of the trip and sort of sugarcoat it. And so that may be why the trip gives the appearance of a, of a fun trip. It's supposed to be educational. I think it's just the, the sugar with the medicine, so to speak.
I mean, when, when we went to Spain, there was a lot of fun that they did. I mean, we went, we ate in Valencia. We ate paella in a restaurant and, you know, they went to the beach. But before any of that fun stuff happened, you know, there was a lot of tours of cathedrals and the history behind it. And, you know, so it was, it was educational, but at the same time it's fun because if everything, I don't think kids would go if everything is just educational. They want to have a little bit of fun in the countries too. I mean, and, and the educational part would just be, being immersed in the culture. You know, I know that you can go snorkeling and, you know, do kayaking and everything, but do, we don't really have a, a live volcano anywhere around us that they can go see or, you know, anything like that, or, or go to the Panama Canal. I mean, that's kind, that's kind of something you had to experience when you go on this trip. So it's, 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 it's all a learning experience. I'm, I'm saying, you know, even though you see a lot of fun stuff as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rita?
Yes, um, I have a lot of questions about this trip. When I look at the two different proposal that we've had, you know, the second one is be for, um, I believe Italy and Germany and Switzerland. And it's a, for a student, it's a thousand dollars less. Um, about the same timeframe, you know, in terms of the number of days. But there's a lot more information on the, um, the form that we received. Uh, you know, depending on how many students sign up, but there, it's just a lot more filled out. To me, this looks like it's rushed. I think we need much more detail on here in terms of transportation, um, flights, how they getting to, it said, you know, maybe New York Airport, maybe Newark, but it's nothing's, nothing's concrete about this. And I know it's a little ways off. And I want to know whether or not the expense and then for, for a parent or chaperone, it's, you know, five thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Does it, does this all include airfare? I, I assume it's all with meals and hotels. But at least the other one listed the hotels. This doesn't list hotels. It, it, it just doesn't have enough information for me to say yes to. So I, since we have a lot of time, I would prefer to see this in a little more detail.
I don't know if I, uh, shared with you the itinerary and everything. Transportation is all included.
Yeah, but we don't have any.
So I think to Rita, I, I hear your point and I, um, I don't.
That's all I'm going to say is that I can't approve this until I see more informa- about it.
Couldn't.
In more detail. And does that expense include going to Columbia? And what would it be? Because to me, Columbia is not that safe, even, you know, that particular city. Would it be less if they just went to Costa Rica and Panama?
Those are things that I have to ask the, the tour director, you know, the, uh, the consultant actually. And I didn't put transport, I don't know why I didn't put transportation, but transportation, uh, like to, for the kids to go like to the airport, parents usually drive them. But in, in, within the countries, they have transportation included. The hotel is included, you know, all the town, the airline, airfare. I'm sorry.
There is no names of the hotels. The other one, it tells you exactly where this, where the students are staying. This is just incomplete and there needs to be more information.
So Rita, Rita, thank you. I absolutely hear your concern. And I would, I want to recognize two of the board members and then I have a plan. Thank you. William?
Yeah, the, um, yeah, I'm concerned about the Columbia still because the State Department still has it as, uh, you know, high risk in regards to travel advisory. And, um, that, that could dramatically change, just like any of the locations for both trips. But, you know, to approve it for Columbia when it's already, um, you know, at a level three out of four, where the State Department is, you know, recommending that they reconsider the travel to that location. That makes it a challenge. That's the only thing I wanted to bring up.
Thank you, William. I appreciate that. Matthew?
Thank, thank you, Kim. Boy, there are so many pieces to it. The Columbia piece is a challenge for me. But I don't think that that by itself would stop me supporting this because I'm sure Ms. Morales can negotiate a, uh, a trip, either extending a couple of days in Costa Rica or Panama to substitute for Columbia and save part of the transportation. So that piece is a concern, but I think that's surmountable. Otherwise, I would support this with reservations. I would support it because they got this initial request to us in the beginning of the year. And it's not their fault that we didn't have a chance to look at it. And delaying this another three or four or five months will make the achievement of the goal of very difficult. I have questions about the cost. I have questions about the educational value. I have organized trips of French kids to the United States. And we found a partner. For me, it was cooperative extension. It could have been the Groton School District. And we have the kids stay with families in, uh, a northern New York county. They were all in the same county we had. So the housing for the French kids was covered. The kids were really integrated into the society because they went to school with the local kids. They went with the families to restaurants or whatever it was. So I will support this. But I would like to communicate to any teacher wanting to do a program that part of the planning is to insert the kids in the culture and that future requests coming next year should give that some due consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Matthew. Susan, uh, um, Ms. Morales, uh, you have been waiting for this for a really long time and I do appreciate, um, you actually staying on. I, I think there's a will of the board that we would like, um, we would like this trip to move forward. Um, I think the board needs some more information. Um, and so I don't want to have a, I don't want to call a vote tonight. Um, because I'm not quite sure if it's going to move in a favorable way. Um, because I think that there's just so many questions. So, um, Susan, actually, I, I would like to direct that to you. Would you be willing to see if we could get more information about this trip, what the trip would look like, um, uh, with Columbia, not Columbia? So that we can get those, um, so we can get that answered. So an itinerary that kind of, that gives us some more information, um, so the board can feel comfortable about approving the trip. And I promise that if it needs to be done before March and you can get the information to us, I will ask for us to have a special meeting prior to a committee of the whole or right before a committee of the whole. So we can look at that, so we can look at.
Well, I think we have ample time that it could come back next month or the following month. But she, I, I do think Ms. Morales needs to get us the information. So she, she'll send it to me first and then I'll see if it's ready for the board.
Okay.
I just wanted to also say that Columbia is an extension. So it doesn't have to be part of it.
So.
It's not part, is, the, 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 the trip is Costa Rica and Panama with an extension to Columbia. So that can be out. That doesn't, you know what I'm saying? So.
Uh, Ms. Morales, thank you so much. And so, uh, Susan, I'm just going to, um, yeah, I just, um, it, I'll let you kind of think about that with Ms. Morales in terms of what that, what, which should be on that trip. Um, and, um, have it kind of come back to us, um, about that. Um, William and, um, not William. Oh, my God. Matthew, do you still have a question?
No, I'm sorry. No, I think I could lower my hand just for.
Okay. So Dean, I am actually going to be moving this, um, motion off the table, um, so that we can get more information. Do you have like a question that you need to get answered?
Yeah, I only wanted to point out that comparison was made more than once between the one trip and the other, the information provided. And this is not a knock on anybody, but if you look at the European trip, the information provided also from apparently the same outfit, EFT. It's, when we talk about hotels, these are sample hotels. In both cases, what I'm seeing is this is very, very advanced planning that cannot be in any terrific detail because we're still trying to figure out how they're going to fly there, where they're going to stay. But in general, this is where they're going. And EFT in one case is providing with information on samples. So just want, don't want people to walk away from these proposals thinking one is less informative than the other one. This other one technically is also.
I would say that Principal Kelleher is on and he can work with his staff to really do the comparison and see if they can't get something very similar for the coast, for the, um, Columbia, the Costa Rica and Panama trip.
Okay. Um, all right. So I'm, I, so, um, Dean, can you walk me through polit, politarian wise? We have a motion on the floor for discussion. Um, can I ta, can I have this tabled until a, a future, uh, regular Board of Ed meeting? And do I need a vote for that?
Yeah. So if you want to have somebody move to table the thing, it'll be seconded, you know, that will simply scoot it to another agenda if that's what you want to do.
So, okay, so I've got a first by Matthew and I've got Liz seconding that. Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor of the motion on the floor, which is the table, this trip, um, to a future, um, date, all's in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. This one is also in an advance. Do we feel like we have enough information? Or do we want to have, um, Susan have her staff, um, specifically Ted, work on more details of the, of the next trip? Or do we feel like this one has more?
I think Laurel's here. I think she should speak to it because there are more details. So I'd like her to come on and speak to this trip. The Travel Club, which is also for twenty twenty-four in July.
All right. Um, just checking out the will of the board. Thank you. Um, Matthew, can I have you read the motion for number four, please?
Um, delighted. I move, we approve Fitch High School Travel Club's field request to. I move, we approve Fitch High School Travel Club's field request to Germany, Italy, Switzerland scheduled for six July twenty twenty-four through sixteen July twenty twenty-four inclusive.
Have a second to that, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Liz. Discussion.
I can just take a couple of minutes to talk about it really quick. Um, so my trip's a little different from a vet's trip. Um, I started, restarted, I want to say, because I think the Travel Club used to formerly be run by Liz Porter. And then when she retired, it went to, um, Allison Harvey, and then it was Noel for a little bit. Um, and I restarted it this past year. Um, and I want to say this, this summer I am taking twenty-five students to London, Paris and Rome. Um, so as that stuff has come together, it really brings to light a lot of the questions that you guys were having about um, a vet's trip and some current concerns about the hotels and the chaperone costs and all those things. So hopefully I can clear up any of those questions as well. Um, but with the Travel Club, I am trying to host a trip every year. I had a lot of excitement for last year's trip and I had some students that are going on the band trip to Hawaii, but also wanted the opportunity to go to Europe. So they were excited to see that there is going to be another travel opportunity within the Travel Club for that. Um, so I do already have some interest out there going on for the, this current, uh, for the new trip next summer. Um, I did do a training tour in Madrid as a first time trip leader um, this past October, and it was really eye opening and I got to see really what the students experience on a trip. Um, it's very, I think, educational. I had never been to Spain. Um, and I learned so much. I got to see like a traditional flamenco dance and I was immersed in food and culture. And I was just so excited for my students to have that same opportunity this summer. And actually my Travel Club students came together and voted on selecting this next trip um, to Germany, Italy and Switzerland. So this is coming from student interest as well as my own interest. Um, and I guess I'm just, I'll like let it open up to questions so I can answer specific things, um, that you guys may have.
Thank you, Laurel. I'm going to recognize, um, Rita and then Liz.
Laurel, Laurel, I had a quick question about the adult traveler. The cost of a chaperone, then you have slash free. What does that mean?
So for every six students that sign up EF, uh, gives a free chaperone spot. So, um, so like I have four chaperone spots in my trip this summer and those are opportunities for other teachers and adults that are willing to travel with the students. Like I'm traveling with another teacher this summer and they get a free spot to come. So it's not as much of a burden for them to have to like pay all that money to come on the trip. Of course it is open to parents if they want a chaperone. That's why that parent cost is there. Um, but most parents opt out. Um, well, but I welcome them if they want to come, but it, that free spot is there for our, our other staff that would be accompanying us on the trip.
Well, I think it looks wonderful and I wish I was a student at it again. So, or one of my children was, so they could go. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to recognize Liz, then Matthew, then Beverly.
Laurel, thank you very much for that nod. Um, but, um, I, I have to tell you, I just, I, I'm not sure what the board remembers about EF Tours. But EF Tours does a fabulous job with students and it is an immersive, uh, situation. So it is a very valuable, um, experience for them. Laurel, my question is, is what about students who want to go, but just, I realize you have fundraisers, but really just don't have the money. Is there any possibilities for scholarships? I think somebody mentioned that, but I don't remember. And if you could clarify that, please, because I, if there are people out there that want to go, then we should make every effort, you know, through the club of somehow, you know, find ways for them to go and, and not just depend on fundraisers.
Of course. So, um, there's a couple of things through EF. They do have scholarship opportunities. The students can apply. I think they give over like two hundred thousand dollars or something like that in scholarships every year. And that can be like an as any basis. Students can apply. They also get through their own page, the opportunity to do a GoFundMe through EF. They get a hundred percent of those proceeds. I do have a couple of students going this summer that have used that and utilized that option and have fully funded their trip, which is really nice. Um, additionally, um, I am running some fundraisers. I just, I just started one last week and they have already raised twenty-three hundred dollars um, in just a few days. So, um, that money's going towards our tipping, but also, um, just in our Travel Club account. So I was also hoping to continue to do some travel, uh, club fundraiser. So I could also maybe try to set up something with Mr. Kelleher as well. Um, maybe, maybe for you guys, if that needs to be included of like being able to gift scholarship and stuff like that through fundraised money. Um, I don't know if that's an option, but I have always wanted to add that in. Um, can I think what else?
Well, I'm just glad to hear that they, um, they do offer scholarship. And, um, I'm just hoping that that's being publicized. Well, you know, because I, I just would hate to see anybody who, you know, who can't afford it be lose out on this opportunity because of that. And that's, and I know that's what you're trying to do is to keep the opportunity going. So thank you, Laurel. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I'm going to recognize Matthew then Beverly. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Kim. Ms. Hallibeky, I'm very pleased to see that you found a partner educational institution in Southern New Hampshire University. Uh, I'm curious to, to, if you have twenty-four students, how many of them would take advantage of it? And is there a supplemental cost beyond the cost of the trip that they would have to pay? And my second question is, it says students can purchase travel protection. Uh, what's the cost supplemental cost that they'd have to pay on that? And then I have one more question after I hear that.
Okay. Um, so to answer your first question, EF does partner with Southern New Hampshire University to gain credit. Um, I forget the cost of what the credit is, but so actually, um, so we are getting ready to start doing our like travel thing. So like my students are picking chaperones for this up, not chaperone, excuse me, roommates for this upcoming trip. But in May is when I go over with the students and their families about how to earn credit for their travels. Um, so it does come at additional costs at Southern New Hampshire, but there's like two options that you can do. And I want to say that it's around like a hundred and fifty dollars for the credit.
Per credit?
Um, well, for like the whole like thing. It's, it's around one fifty, I think.
So that would be three, roughly three college credits for a hundred fifty dollars? That sounds like a heck of a deal if that's the case.
It honestly, like the credit deal, it, it reminds me a lot of like my students that are taking UConn AP. Like they're getting, if they pass a class with a C, they're getting, you know, UConn credit for two hundred dollars. Um, so it is, it is similar to that. I remember thinking that when I was looking at it. And, um, so it is, it is, comes at additional cost. I know there was another one where like there's one that's no additional cost, but you have to like work it out with the school and stuff. And I know that we haven't done that, like as a Board of Ed and like a school together, but I know that with these trip opportunities, that's like an option, like if we wanted to make it not like a cost for them, like maybe in the future or something, we could look at that. But I know EF looks um, like provides that as an option too. Um, so that was your scholarship question. And then your other question was.
There was one of the cost of travel protection and then the third question I haven't asked yet.
Oh yes. So travel protection, um, I believe it was two hundred dollars. I had several actually students enroll in travel protection for this. I think there's two levels of travel protection that they can um, select. Most students opt into that, which is good because I've had, I've actually had a couple of kids drop for various reasons. Um, one of them actually right now, depending on, uh, passing of this trip. Uh, they are un- under sixteen, uh, parents are divorced and the second parent will not sign the, um, passport. So they could be moved to this trip, um, in order to still be able to go. But if they don't, because they per, they per chose the travel protection, they will get all of their money back that they've spent on the trip, which is almost all at this point. So it is, it seems affordable and most from what I can see with the twenty-five kids that are going on the one this summer, most parents, um, pay for it.
So my follow-up question was, I read the materials that you sent. It sounds like a very well put together program with lots of cultural experiences, comma, but isn't there always a comma, but? Comma, but, uh, to me, the most important portion of an international trip for high school age students is they're meeting their peers of the host country. Because that gives them insight into the country in a way that watching a bullfight or going to a museum or going to some local restaurants will, will not give. So this trip is the way it is. That's fine. But I invite you, this is just one person speaking. I don't represent the board. I invite you to consider where, when you work with your next trip to speak with your colleague for the company and say, how can we get some peer-to-peer contact to improve that cultural piece? That's all.
I, I like your suggestion and I will definitely let my tour consultant know.
Thank you, Matthew. I'm going to recognize Beverly and then Dean.
Oh. My fir- my question was Matthew's first question about the college credit earned. And, but my comment is when my daughter was in middle school, my husband and I, we chaperoned a trip with middle school and high school students to Spain through EF Tours and they did an excellent job. So.
Thank you.
It should be a good trip.
Thank you.
Dean?
I'm going to lower my hand here. Um, okay, two things. One, let us all bear in mind when we're talking about, um, immersion and peer-to-peer contact and all of that, that unlike a semester abroad or anything like that, or even the two weeks I had in the Soviet Union where we had to meet up with our counterparts. Uh, these are week and a half trips. And, um, I'm not saying don't immerse, don't strive for that, but my expectation for trips of this, uh, you know, that, that are this short is that kids who may never have stepped out of the country or may never have been to these places before, um, at least get a, get a taste. So even if it is going to a bullfight, um, a- a- and not mixing it up with, uh, you know, with Spanish high school kids. Uh, that's fine too. That also has value. Uh, the other thing I wanted to note was, that I noticed at the bottom of the, of the, the Central American trip, the website is EF Tours. So it appears that they're Yes. Both these features are looking to do it through EF Tours. Um, yet I'm, I'm hearing praises sung for this trip because if you have tours, none of that for the prior trip, but I've spoken my piece.
Yes, a vet should very easily be able to access the same documents that I have for her trip and I'm sure she actually probably has them. Um, so EF's really good with providing that information. So I'm sure that you guys will get that.
Um, I'm going to recognize Bev. Do you have another question?
Yes, I do. And, and I was just curious, um, how diverse is the group that goes, uh, how diverse are the students that go on these trips?
Um, that's a good question. Um.
I'm just thinking about this because I think it was Ms. Porter that brought up scholarships. And, um, cause you have some poor kids and, and, and Dean said like a lot of kids have never gone, been out of the country. And I experienced that when I taught at the prison. A lot of kids never been at a Harvard or Bridgeport. So that's why I'm asking this question. What are you doing to grab those kids to go on those trips? Cause those are the kids you really want to grab.
Yeah, I really appreciate your, your question because that's something that when I started and I took over the Travel Club, I, I wanted to, I want to provide access to all my students. Um, and I have like, like I have a, a, a good group of kids that are going, um, but I feel like when I'm speaking to my students and I'm offering it to all my classes, um, I try to really like break down, like especially when I'm like, when I offer the trip to like my sophomores and my juniors. And specifically like they're at an age where some of them are, are working. Um, and I feel like a lot of the kids that are going on my trip are, they don't really hold jobs. Um, but for some, I do have a couple of kids that they're paying for their whole trip. So I try to like talk to them about how like they should foster an opportunity for themselves. And if they have the opportunity to get a job and like work and we just like sit down and we have a conversation and I try to be very transparent with them. But also like I encourage them to apply for scholarship and I encourage for them to, you know, think about like all the little odd jobs that may, they do, like maybe babysitting or something like that where they can get paid through their GoFundMe page. But to be honest, it's something I want to explore more and I would be happy to, open to suggestions on how I could reach more of our students at Fitch High School because it's not just, you know, I don't want this to just be like targeting a specific, you know, group of kids.
Thank you, Laurel. And I think that, I think that that does require a larger conversation than maybe what we need to have tonight. But Bev's point, I think is right on, is right on point. William?
Um, just a quick question. I don't see how much it would cost for a Board of Ed member to go. So if I were to go, you know, what do I have to pay? No, that, I think these are great, both of them.
Your full year salary.
Yeah.
Full year salary.
But, you know, but the thing is, is the, the take home is when you think of the Honolulu trip for the, um, for the band and the orchestra. The timing was so short that so many individuals had to pay six hundred dollars per month in order to be able to go on that trip. And that really decreased the number of individuals that could actually go because it was just too much. So I think from the board standpoint, it's really important for us to approve these as quickly as possible because a hundred and eighty-one dollars a month is so much more reasonable. And I think also for, for both leaders of the trips, developing a m- money, you know, a fundraising platform and plans will help those that, you know, aren't able to afford it, you know, so that will, um, assist in regards to, anybody can go on it regardless of, of, you know, where they're from. That would help with diversity, definitely. Like with the band, uh, one, there were two individuals that couldn't afford to go and they were just devastated and really, you know, really, really wanted to. And so I was able to support them so that they could go because I, I think diversity is so, so important. And so I think having a great platform in regards to what the fundraising looks like, the tools that we could supply to the students to help them raise the money would be, um, really beneficial. That's it.
Thank you, William. Jay?
Yes, I just want to, um, say I agree with, uh, Beverly and Dr. Horgan that we should be very, uh, concerned about how, um, money is raised so that, uh, it's really open to everybody. Um, otherwise, you know, why is the school district sponsoring, you know, something like this? You know, families could just do it on their own. I mean, if we're going to go to this process of, uh, sponsoring a trip, I'm also concerned that we have uh, up-to-date policies with regard to what happens when there's disciplinary issues, medical issues, how, you know, those are addressed overseas or if they have to be brought back in the middle of the trip. And, um, as much as you know, I'm such a big fan of our legal bills, you know, have, have we reviewed that recently to make sure that we're, we're covered on liability? I mean, I, I'm sure the district's overall, uh, insurance policy uh, protects to some extent, but we want to try to prevent those problems, you know, before they arise. Thank you.
Kim, I just wanted to say at one time, um, the principal actually had a discretionary fund and would support two students that really couldn't afford to go, but had wanted to go. So I'm not sure whether or not Principal Keller has that option anymore, but that's how students that couldn't afford it used to be able to go. The, they actually, the, the principal would use his funds to support them to go on the trip.
I do have some funds i- in the student account that I can help students for field trips of, uh, but I I don't think that I have enough to support a, a full tuition to one of these trips.
No, what it was, was like, you know, maybe half, you know, if they had almost, but not quite, you know, it was a little bit.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure how much is in that fund directly. Quick, I certainly would be willing to support students. I just don't know to what level I'd be able to do so.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this trip that is on the floor? Any other discussion on this trip that is on the floor? Hearing none, I'm going to read the uh, motion to approve Fitch um, approve Fitch High School Travel Club's field trip request to Germany, Italy, and Switzerland scheduled for July 6th, 2024 through July 16th, 2024. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstain? That trip has passed. Ms. Morales, I am looking forward to you and Ted coming back. Um, so that we can also get this one approved as well. Um, and thank, thank you for the two of you for being here and waiting that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, we've we've got some more things to go through. Um, uh, the policy committee, can we wait on the first reading of the library materials?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'm, so I am going to, um, if, as long as the board gives me full approval, I am going to move us past um, number two, um, which is the library material policy and we'll add it to March's meeting. Is that all right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, um, Liz, would you be, I I don't know who I've gotten to read or not read. Um, can someone read the motion on number five?
Who do you want?
Please go for it. Thank you.
All right. To accept the Cutler Elementary School Project State Project Number 059-0188 as complete and to authorize the Director of Public Works to submit final project information to OSCGR to begin the audit process.
Can I have a second to that?
Also, good.
Thank you, Andrea. Uh, discussion and can someone tell me what OSCGR means?
Sure. Kim, if you don't mind, I'll jump in.
Thank you, Greg.
Yeah, this is Greg Hanover, Director of Public Works for the town. Um, I also have with me Kelly Nelly, who's our Senior Project Manager with our construction uh, managing firm of Arcadis tonight. And OSCGR stands, it's a state agency that stands for Office of School Construction's Grant Review. Both schools, I'll I'll talk about both schools at the same time here, if you don't mind, because they're really done in parallel, but they're both completed. Um, and the students moved in in September of 2021. So they're in their second year at the schools. Um, since that time, um, we've been completing punch lists, uh, doing final inspections, commissioning, file commissionings, uh, completing all the closeout of contracts, paperwork. It always amazes me that it seems that that part of the process takes just as long as it took to build the schools, but it it does. And we're, so we're now at the point where we're, we've got everything completed. Um, and we're ready to submit the the final package up to the State Office of OSCGR. And um, so Kelly and I are here tonight to answer any questions and then, um, you know, have you hopefully approved and accept the projects and we'll get the audit process started with the state, which can take quite a while.
So we got um, the rundown from Sam, correct, which is that this is really about, um, also that we have, we have warranties that are in place for some of the systems as well. Is that correct?
Yeah, the warranty period actually started about a year ago. So those items that, you know, had a warranty period of one year, they're probably getting close to the end. But as Sam said, there's some that have a longer warranty period and of course the roofs, I believe, for like a 30-year warranty we paid for. But, you know, the contractors have all been complete. Everything's, you know, has been accepted by uh, the architect, the the town um, is is being done. Um, Sam, you know, has worked well with us, you know, uh, making sure everything was uh, what, in a state that he needed it to be when he took it over. So there was, you know, a few little punchless items we've been doing um, over the last year or so. But this, you know, the schools are essentially done.
Do I have questions from the board?
Kim, I just want, so the schools have not been turned over to the Board of Education yet, correct? Until we vote on this?
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I was asking Greg.
Uh, I I think we did, and I don't know if Kelly's here or not, if she can remember, but I thought we did turn these, actually turn them over to the school.
Okay.
And this is just kind of like, okay, now you're accepting it and you're allowing us to to, you know, put this package um, for final audit to the state.
Perfect. Jay.
And I I guess I'm just going to ask one more time, just because we had a, had an issue with um, the middle school, that there were a number of things that that they felt that um, were not really addressed during the construction process, such as areas that aren't properly heated. Um, I know there were some issues in the gym. Um, there was going back and and asking for some additional items on the um, the field. And we found out that after we accepted it, we sort of gave away our ability to even ask for any of those things. I mean, is there anything here that we should be concerned about? Or are all the, the vendors paid, the subcontractors? Are there any claims against any of the generals? Or I mean, is everything like really going through with a fine tooth comb before we e- accept this?
Yeah, I mean, that that's what we've been doing over the last year or so is, you know, Arcadis has been going through, making sure every uh, contractor, subcontractor, and supplier's been paid, um, that, you know, we've got all the release of liens um, from from everybody. So, you know, all that paperwork has been completed.
I remember one of the biggest things were the stoves, but I think those were replaced. We're having trouble with both stoves and both.
Yes, those those got, those got replaced. Yes, correct.
And Beverly brought up an interesting point earlier about water pressure is is, is the water pressure sufficient to the building to to um, activate the fire suppression systems?
Yeah, the fire, the fire, yeah, that would be a separate service. Um, that would be like a six or an eight-inch line coming in there. Um, and like, they got utilities has to do all sorts of tests when they turn it turn that over or they even design the system. So yes, that should be, should be fine. Um, I hadn't heard anything about the, and I heard earlier Beverly's comment about the kitchen water pressure and I, I hadn't heard anything about that during the whole construction. So I'll I'll double back with Sam on that. Um, let's see if it's, there's something that he needs help, you know, help with.
Okay.
Thank you, Greg. Beverly.
Thank you.
And thank you, Kim. Um, is the landscaping all completed at both of the schools?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Greg.
Good question. Any other discussion?
Well, I, sorry, I do.
Okay.
What happens if the that water pressure uh, problem isn't resolved and we've done this tonight?
Well, at this, at this point, if it's, you know, we'd have to go back and see it, um, exactly what would, what's causing it. Um, you know, if it's you know, a design error, we'd have to go back to the consultants and get it, get it fixed. But, you know, I I to, without even looking at it, this is the first one here, but I can't really comment.
I guess that's my point. That's my point. How do we, if if, that could be a a big issue. And if, how do we uh, vote in favor of this with good conscience?
So Greg, if I may, if I may step in, Greg, unfortunately, all the, all the contractors have already been paid. So if it is a a a water pressure issue, um, that area is not, um, you know, under warranty at this time. So it will have to be funded in a different way. The project wouldn't support that either way. Um, unless there was an issue brought up previously that we have to do some research in. And then we have some contingency dollars we can, we can use to hire additional consultants if it's not in the warranty period. But accepting it to, accepting it for audit would not, um, you know, stop you from being able to do that.
Any other question? Hearing none, I'm going to move us to a vote. Um, to accept the Cutler Elementary School Project State Project Number 059-0188 as complete and authorize the Director of Public Works to submit final project information to OSCGR to begin the audit process. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstain? That vote has carried. Matthew, would you be willing to read the motion for number six, please?
Thank you, Kim. I move we accept the Westside Elementary School Project State Project Number 059-0189 as complete. And to authorize the Director of Public Works to submit final project information to OSCGR to begin the audit process.
Can I have a second to that, please?
Second.
I've got Liz. Thank you. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, um, all those in favor to accept the Westside Elementary School Project State Project Number 059-0189 as complete and to authorize the Director of Public Works to submit final project information to OSCGR um, to begin the audit process. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. I would like to say thank you to Greg and Kelly for hanging in with us until nine o'clock. Um, I will try to be much better at that in the future to get you guys before, but thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Um, moving on to information and proposals, um, letter and communications, a comment by board members, Beverly.
Nope, the only information, the only communications I had, I stated at the uh, before about the vaping in the bathrooms.
Andrea?
I have two things. I, I went, I went online today with the um, preserving our history, preparing our future council report, and Carmita Hodge was there representing Groton. And um, it was very difficult to understand. The the audio was, was very, very bad. It kept breaking up. But I did hear Carmita say something that um, so aligns with our uh, um, international baccalaureate program. And that is that her, her view, her, her vision for this is for students not just to learn the content, but to learn the content and then do something with it. It was a, just a wonderful um, vision from Carmita. And and the other thing that I have, and I meant to do this last week, and somehow it it got away from me at the end. And I just wanted to give Rita um, a shout out and just, just um, thank her because she was the lone one who had the courage to stand up and and not vote for the budget. And I just, that just impressed me so much. And it talks about what this board is about. So I wanted to thank Rita. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Dean?
Oh. I haven't been away all that long. It seems like a long time. I did, as you know, try to check in that one time. I happened to be in La Jolla with a lot of sea lions in the background. I'm not sure. I'm sure that I was able to contribute zero. Uh, except as a nasty interruption. So I apologize for not having been around for all the critical stuff. But it was just a back-to-back thing. My tailed my wife out to California, Colorado, and then my daughter wanted to go see some schools down south. So there we are. Sorry.
Thank you, Dean. Rita?
Yes, um, I actually had some calls from RTM members concerned about the, our, our new budget, the board's budget of 3% increase of eighty-one million plus dollars. I also watched the um, on theday.com, the Fitch New London Basketball Game, which was very exciting. It was last Saturday. And it's wonderful. The day gives us the opportunity to watch this online. And and even though Fitch lost, it was a very um, close game. And I I thought they did great. So that's about it. And oh, and I really appreciate the students talking to us and telling us about that NEA is going to be having their their wonderful celebration of the arts. If any board members haven't been there in um, in the past, they will send out a schedule. They, they have people from the community. They have usually the Coast Guard Band and just all sorts of wonderful things. So it's really a a great event to to go to.
Thank you, Rita. Liz?
Nope, nothing at this time.
Thank you. Matthew?
Alina and I went to a chamber music concert at Fitch. It wasn't at all what I expected. I thought we would be listening to two or three pieces of chamber music. Instead, we had about fifteen or sixteen vignettes. It was a review. It was wonderful. The kids were terrific. We were so glad to be there. I walked last week. I did walkthroughs with Susan and Phil at Middle School, Fitch, and Mystic River. And this week, I'm going to read stories to my young friends at CK Theme Server and Mystic River. Thank you for the privilege.
So it is Read Across America, but there's always a place you can go read. So, you know, just let me know or let the principal know if you want to participate this week. Thank you. William?
Um, just a a lot of uh, the people in my area reaching out, letting us know how um, successful their seniors are in regards to acceptances to schools. It's just been a tremendous past several weeks. Um, really want to recognize, you know, the team at Fitch for assisting so many members of uh, our community and really achieving um, just acceptance at great schools and fulfilling some of them, their dreams. It's, it's just been amazing. So that's what I have to offer.
I would love to hear in, like sometime where some of those students are going, where our seniors are going. And also about when you come back from Hawaii, how that went.
No, I wish I was going to Hawaii.
You're not going. Oh, no.
No, my daughter won't let, let me.
I'm gonna recognize Jay. I'm gonna recognize Jay.
Yes, um, I received the same communication that we all did uh, with regard to the um, the waiver process with the state. And I have to say, I'm surprised that there are only what, five districts who actually have been approved by the state? Um, so this, this is
Think eleven.
Eleven, okay. Yeah, I mean, I think that's um, completely unreasonable. And I I look forward to digging in further about um, you know, what that means and how uh, how we got to that point and where we're going to go forward. So I'm looking forward to that, that COW, where we actually get into that issue. Because um, it's a fundamental um, thing that affects our students. And for there to be information being spread that may or may not be true, which impunes the work of uh, you know, so many of our teachers over the years. Um, you know, I realize that there have been reading wars at different times in 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 our history uh, of American education, but um, when people start flinging around uh, disinformation, of course, I'm in no position to to judge wh- what's correct here. But there are a lot of parents, I believe, who are concerned, you know, um, you know, what, what is the best approach? And of course, I think we probably all agree there isn't one best approach for every single student. And so I look forward to learning more about that and how we can support our students. Because at the end of the day, you know, that's what we're here for, is supporting the students. So thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Jay. Um, I, I received the same emails. I am excited that there are so many of us that are able to kind of get to school events and also just talk really highly about the school events. And so, thank you, folks. I am going to, um, I'm going to be meeting Susan, I think we're mo- we're meeting tomorrow. Um, and um, she and I are going to go through the list that we have um, for agenda items. And then I'm going to send out to you, to you, to you all to make sure that I've captured. Because there's been so many that we have collected and I want to make sure that I, I, I'm, I'm getting the information that people want. So um, I, I will do that after Susan's in my meeting tomorrow morning. Um, and if you look at the back of the page, um, we have meeting dates. Susan, I am just really wondering if we could just make sure that we get the town council, the public hearing for the town council on their budget. And also when um, they are going to be talking about the board of ed. Um, I think that that would be helpful so that we can begin to get that in our calendars, um, et cetera.
Um, could you tell me what then March 2nd and March 16th are meetings with town bodies?
That is the um, the Permanent School Building Committee? That is the, um, the Permanent School Building Committee?
Oh, so that, so that, I was hoping that maybe it was something about our budget, but it's not.
Nope.
Those are just, okay.
Kim, do you have on your discussion list, um, about student and staff attendance?
Yes, ma'am. It's like my, it's one of my first.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
You got it. I've just underlined it now, Bev. All right. Any other, so once again, I'm not trying to squelch people not giving me info, um, a- agenda items. I just, if I could get those together and I can send it out to you, um, the process by the policies, actually you're supposed to email me anyways. So, but I wanted to make sure that, um, we did that. You guys, we, um, I thought that this was gonna be an easy and peasy meeting after we have spent a couple of months together. But I thought that we had some really enriched conversations and, um, we're making the district better um, because of our questions and our thoughts and our, and our perspectives. And so I appreciate that. And I will entertain.
Motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, Susan, I'll see you tomorrow. Bye, guys.
Bye, everybody.